So, good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the January 12, 2021, regular meeting of the planning board to order. Um, welcome. We'll start with a roll call vote, please.
Dan Carroll.
Evan Seer.
Steven Martelli.
Ms. LeBlanc.
Stacy LeBlanc.
And Matt Duvall. Thank you. So for the evening, we have, let me count, one, two, three, uh, six regular members present and one, um, associate member. That's Mr. Bergeron. And for the duration of this meeting, we'll have Mr. Bergeron serve as a regular member. That means he will be able to vote and to make motions. First order of business is the minutes. Anyone have any corrections to make to the minutes? We're going to discuss this. I actually have one small change, and that would be my name on the last page, Megan. I'm just in that one instance at the top of the page. There's one L in my name instead of two. Minor detail, but. So any more discussion of the motion on the minutes? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote.
Um, Mr. Carroll. Mr. Seer.
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Mr. Martelli.
Yes.
It's a blank.
You're on mute. You're still on mute.
I think she said yes.
I think she said yes.
Mr. Staples.
I said I wasn't present, but yes.
Okay.
Got it.
Mr. Staples. And Chairman Duval.
Yes.
Sorry, that was in alphabetical order. I gotta write that down.
Right. Um, thank you. All right. We'll move on to item number three in our agenda. This is a presentation from the city manager, Mr. Carroll, about the five-year capital improvement plan. Mr. Carroll?
I believe Mr. Crowell.
Oh, yeah. Sorry, that's what I meant. Sorry.
I wasn't quite prepared. I could have gone for it, but.
It's all right, Dan.
I'd like to hear your version next, Dan, but we'll back from Mr. Crowell from that first.
Crowell, there we go. So, thank you, everyone. Appreciate the time to come in. Um, I think we we kind of made this, uh, kind of came before the planning board, I think after, um, the CI plant, CIP plan was adopted last year. Um, so I'm glad we're getting here early, uh, to have a conversation, and that's really what I'm hoping we'll be able to do tonight. Um, two things that I want to cover. One, I think it's going to be important for you to know where, where we are currently with CIP projects that were adopted and approved in this fiscal year. We did give this update to the council, uh, recently. Um, and we are making good progress on about, uh, with the, you know, we have unallocated funds, some other funds through CDBG funding or, um, TIP funding as well, but we had approximately just over eleven million dollars worth of projects, um, that were out, that was allocated last year that we're moving forward with. And, uh, the report that we have with council, we, other than maybe four of those projects, uh, they're all either completed or underway, uh, and sometimes timing on this, and certainly during this COVID pandemic, has been a bit of a challenge on some projects, uh, but a lot of them, we've been able to move forward with, which we're very pleased with. Uh, like any, um, CIP plan, there are times when, uh, you set off on the right course, thinking this is what you'll be doing moving forward, and then throughout the year or something changes, situation changes, and we decide, let's pause on that and not move forward with it. So I was able to kind of give that report to the council, um, uh, at their last meeting. Uh, but what I wanted to do was cover, uh, for planning board, uh, just where we are with some economic and development, uh, projects that we had allocated. Now, I'll look to Eric to assist on some of these. He certainly has a lot, great deal of detail uh, on these components, but within the FY twenty-one bond, economic development planning had, uh, three projects that was really outlined, uh, that they had brought forward. One was a dangerous building demolition. Any of you that have been on the board for a while, you know that we have a regular, uh, request for, for, uh, demolition of dangerous buildings. Uh, we had allocated a hundred thousand dollars in that line item. Eric, we have, uh, currently, we have two projects that, uh, were two that we've identified anyway, that are in the legal process, and we're hoping, uh, we're hoping within this fiscal year, uh, those funds will be allocated for, uh, demoing those two buildings. Correct, Eric?
Yeah, we have, we have a dangerous building that'll be going before council shortly on, uh, Walnut Street. Um, and we have two junkyards. If you dig into the actual capital improvement plan item, it's dangerous buildings and properties. Uh, includes junkyard conditions on, on properties. The two junkyards have been waiting for a court date for about eight months, and they're just not scheduling civil cases. Um, we recently tax acquired both of, both of those properties, uh, about a week ago, um, which positions us a little bit better to get those clean up, cleaned up once and for all. So we're, we're moving on those, but it will likely take into, into next fiscal year to complete them.
Just for the board to know, this is one of those line items that will carry over, um, often because we will have projects, like Eric said, that are underway, but the court process may not align well with the fiscal year. So sometimes there's funds that carry over as we gear up and, and move forward with these. And this is one of them. But we do have usually around that hundred thousand dollar, our request that comes in annually from, uh, from Eric's department. And we know we're always going to have projects like this as we move forward. Um, I think sixteen Alveston was probably the last building we took down, right, Eric?
That's one of the largest demos that we've done, and that used almost the whole hundred thousand for that, that year. Uh, we also have a two-family that we've tax acquired on Riverside Drive. We've really been trying to show it to this afternoon, actually. We've been trying to find somebody that will redevelop it or rehab it, um, but it's getting worse. It actually has grass growing out of the second floor um, from roof leaks. So I think that one will likely be a demo during this upcoming fiscal year.
The other, uh, real large line item for economic development is the comprehensive plan property acquisition program. Again, that's another hundred thousand dollars that allocated there that does go into a growing fund that we have, uh, for a larger projects. Um, and we do have several that we're looking at, uh, for the comp plan. Eric, you want to kind of give a highlight on that?
Yeah, I think the, uh, the biggest one is the Lake Auburn, uh, watershed study. Um, that will be close to a hundred thousand dollars, but we had a little bit left over from the previous year, so it won't use the, the full amount. Uh, we've also used it for property acquisitions in implementing the, uh, comprehensive plan. Um, but it's a big part of that one is to, we've missed opportunities in the past. If we mid-year find an opportunity to acquire a property that the comp plan has recommended, um, we want to have some ability to draw funds from that account, um, rather than, uh, we found in the past, if we're competing with the private sector who can make quick decisions, when a property becomes available, we have to be able to act quickly or else we lose out on that, that opportunity. So the goal is to have something remaining in there for those types of, of opportunities at all times.
The, uh, Lake Auburn study is going back before the council, uh, on the nineteenth, uh, for consideration. Uh, there was, uh, requests for, uh, a little further, uh, background exploring the, uh, company that had put in, consultants that had put in for that bid. So we've been working on that, working with a consultant. Uh, the proposal has been, uh, modified slightly, uh, but that'll be going back before the council consideration.
The other substantial, the other substantial one in that category, I almost missed it, was, um, the, uh, the comp plan recommends a consolidated ball fields complex, and we're working with the Maine Army National Guard and Auburn Suburban Little League, uh, to develop a consolidated ball fields project that would move them off of the National Guard property, uh, to another site on Stevens Mills Road. Uh, the permitting of that, the council has agreed to cover out of that project to give them, give them a jumpstart so they can get on their fundraising.
Thanks, Eric. And the last one is about, uh, nine hundred thousand dollars, uh, that was in the downtown, visiting, uh, allocation, uh, from the council. That, uh, that is one of the projects that we certainly had a lot of conversations. We're talking with a lot of developers. Um, but we did have a few things, obviously, one being COVID, and then the change with personnel within, um, the Economic Development Department and the restructuring that we did there, bringing, uh, new staff on. Um, that team, we're meeting, I think it is next week or so, uh, we're going to be having a session just to discuss this, a downtown strategy, um, as we move forward. So we will have some, uh, work underway, as far as some strategies towards, um, if you remember with this, when we brought this forward, the council was really talking about creating, uh, anchors in the downtown. What are those anchors and what can we bring within the downtown, uh, that would, enhance the ability of someone to say, I'm going to be able to go down into downtown for more than just one stop, um, which would then enhance some of our walkability that we have in the downtown and be able to really create and, uh, feed off from, uh, that development to enhance other developments that, that then come in. We still identified about, uh, four areas that we're really focusing on within the downtown, having regular conversations with developers. Those are, are happening on a regular basis. And now we have our team in place as well, uh, with, uh, Eric now over planning and code, uh, Jay Brencheck, who's now the Economic Development Director, and then Glenn Holmes, who's over Community and Business Development. Uh, and having those three in place, uh, we feel real confident on, uh, moving forward with a lot of these and, uh, bringing some synergy for that, those initiatives. So under the FY twenty-one bonds, those were the three, those three things under economic development, uh, that were allocated. And then under, other, other, of, of funds, rather, uh, it has to do with either TIP or CDBG funds that were, uh, leveraged for the new Auburn Village Center, uh, the downtown parking walkability, and also, um, the Minut Avenue, um, Golf Street redevelopment. Um, and I think the Golf Street redevelopment is on pause. Um, obviously, there's nothing that's, that's currently happening with, uh, that's where the old police department and the, uh, the Lund suite, uh, building, uh, so that, that money is kind of on pause at this time. But those were the other, the other funds that were allocated. Any questions about our current FY twenty-one before I move on to taking a look at the plan?
Uh, Phil, I, I do have several questions. All right. Uh, the junkyard in, is that in New Auburn?
Neither one of those are in New Auburn. There is a third one, though, that we plan on doing after these two that is on, uh, Hackett Road out of Broad Street.
All right.
That some people might consider New Auburn. I'm not sure if that's what you were referring to.
Uh, I was thinking more on, uh, Broad Street along the Little Andrew Skoggan.
No, that, that is one that, um, we've had some recent dumping again at that site, and we were able to get a license plate. Um, PD's following up on that part of it, but that is not one that we think that we'll need to use those funds to get it cleaned up. There's a new owner, and we think he's going to be willing to clean it up.
All right, very good. Uh, Riverside Drive, uh, any idea of where that is? Where that house is?
Uh, ninety-seven Riverside Drive.
Thank you.
And it looks great from the outside. We really hope to save it, but today, um, going through it, it's gotten a lot worse in the last year or so. And there's literally two feet, two-foot-tall grass growing in the living room on the second floor and moss and mold throughout the building.
All right, very good. Uh, and also, uh, Phil, you said the, uh, suite building, the London Suite Building, is that the barn?
It is, yeah.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions about the FY twenty-one? Those are the current approved projects anyway from the council.
Phil, I would, I would just add that nine hundred thousand dollars for a kind of key cornerstone downtown properties. Uh, we have been talking to a lot of developers, and there's a real hesitancy right now to build new restaurant or office space because of COVID. Um, so we, we could potentially settle on all residential, but those key downtown lots, we're thinking longer term and hoping to have a commercial active first floors.
Phil, I do have one more question.
Sure.
And that concerns the, uh, New Auburn Downtown, or, I'm sorry, Norburn Village revitalization, as you call it.
Right.
Um, and the backside of Raleigh's Garage, taking that down. Are we going to build a walkway from the garage back to where the bells are? Going past the New Auburn Social Club property?
Yeah, Eric, you want to talk about where we are on that?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm having my CIP and budget meeting with Phil, I think later this week. Um, what, uh, we're talking about is certainly doing that part of the project next year, but also talking about, um, what else can be planned for phases coming up in the future. Uh, but we, we do plan on completing the removal of the backside of Raleigh's Garage and the sidewalk trail, uh, to South Main Street next year.
All right. Thank you.
Phil, I've got a, I've got one question with regard to New Auburn.
Sure.
So we're looking at, uh, expanding, in fact, tonight, uh, the possibility of expanding form-based code, uh, further up the hill in New Auburn. I do like, I will say, I'll comment, I do like, uh, wh- what I'm seeing in here with regard to the downtown. I think that it supports some of the work we've been doing with rezoning. Uh, my question is, the only thing that I really saw in the CIP plan with regard to New Auburn was specific to the, um, New Auburn Village Center revitalization. Um, w- was there any thought to including additional, um, funds, uh, similar to those proposed for the downtown, or what is the possibility of expanding the concept of downtown to include parts of New Auburn? Um, given that we're, we're, we're looking at expanding zoning to, to increase, uh, viability in that area. So I, I, I'd hate to, I, I guess, not that I'd hate, I'd like to see some capital improvement funds available to, um, kind of piggyback on that, on the effort.
No, this, and this is the, the feedback that is great, um, as we move forward. Like I said, we haven't, um, we don't have our CIP plan, uh, completed, as you heard from Eric, I think his meeting is, we met with several departments, but Eric's is coming up later this week. Um, so that's good feedback. You know, one thing I, uh, uh, for many who don't know, this is, this will be, uh, city manager, this will be the first budget that I present before the council. Couple of things that I am doing and working with staff on is identifying different areas of the community on where our investment has been. And so, uh, one area that I took a look at was regarding this road, you know, our biggest investment as a city is really roads. That's where we make, uh, you know, our, our largest investment. And, and obviously, the, the New Auburn Village, uh, revitalization that, that changed, um, certainly, uh, was a big part of a project as well. Uh, but, uh, for city dollars, we've allocated, uh, in the upcoming year, we'll have about another, I think it's around two and a half, four million dollars that'll be allocated to, uh, some intersection and road improvements, and New Auburn, which is in that, uh, kind of right where Vincent Square is, Raleigh Diner, that whole intersection is being redone, um, outside of New Auburn, what I would consider outside of New Auburn, uh, which would be more in the downtown areas that Elm Street, uh, project that'll be taking place within, remain in Elm and High, uh, and then going up towards, uh, Midlet Avenue. Um, but the projects that we've done in the last ten years in New Auburn, uh, equals about, uh, roughly around sixty million dollars that's been allocated and invested in the New Auburn area for, uh, really, a lot of road reconstruction. We've certainly done, uh, some enhancements with, uh, some wall, retaining walls on some of our roads. Um, and then, and then obviously the work that was done in New Auburn, uh, Village Center. Um, so we are starting to, uh, what I'm having staff do is break down some of the, um, real investment key areas that we've been, um, looking at and looking at it over the past ten years. So we can get a better handle of where, where are we putting our resources? And then now that we're putting our resources there, and especially how this is tying into a lot of our walkability. Anytime we redo a road, we redo a sidewalk as well. So all the road reconstruction that takes place, sidewalks are included in that. If they currently exist or one is needed. Um, the, um, so when we start looking at that investment, then we need to look at, you know, Evan, like you said, where are we doing in that area as far as, um, a strong anchor? Uh, one thing that we, uh, have done, Erica has gone before the council, we've talked about really getting some good parameters around the funding that they provided to really get a good idea of what area you're really looking at as, as downtown. And I, and I would say that if the right project came in, that would be in the, um, allocated area that we have and, uh, in New Auburn currently, um, we would go before the council and say, okay, do we leverage these funds to help for that project? And I believe we'd get, uh, overwhelming support on that. What's nice also is that, that vacant lot that we have in the New Auburn Village that we're currently looking at, you know, that is within the opportunity zone as well, which then also provides a lot of, uh, potential, uh, benefit for a developer. And, and we are having those conversations with the developers. We had a good conversation with, um, you know, our, uh, our broker that's looking at properties. Um, the team had a meeting, uh, this last, last week, uh, to look at all vacant properties within the city and what we need to do to market those and, and push those out. And we've identified, the team has identified a great list, some that we've probably been sitting on, waiting for an opportunity, but now's the time to kind of push that out. Um, and so that's going to be going to the council really soon. So I think, Evan, that's good feedback. How's when you know that that's really where we should be looking, what we should be looking at and aligned with really where we're at with saying, yes, it's listed as downtown. But I think there's, uh, understanding that, that downtown expands a little bit on the front as well.
And Kevin, just to clarify, in twenty seventeen, I think it was, we expanded the downtown TIP district to include New Auburn. Um, so those walkability funds, as well as the key downtown property, um, economic development funds, um, those are eligible in New Auburn and the, the, um, the, uh, Riverway Site, uh, Anniversary Park has been specifically mentioned by council as one of those cornerstone developments that could utilize those.
Okay, yeah, great. I think we're putting effort into this area on our end. I'd like to see it, you know, th- th- that kind of be able to come to something. On the other end, um, I do have one more question about the comprehensive plan property acquisition program. Um, in the write-up, both in, you know, what we were provided and then what's online, uh, right at the city, um, discusses the idea it could include funding property acquisition, grant matching, or individual high property planning or construction projects as needed. Um, so just for my own clarification, is this, is, is that sort of, uh, available, uh, citywide? Or was that being tied to, uh, specific areas within the city?
I can touch on that, Phil.
Go ahead, yeah, yep.
Uh, we, we've used the comp plan acquisition and implementation money is really citywide to implement whatever priorities the council has for that given year for, from the comp plan. Um, the Lake Auburn study certainly reaches the northern end of the city. Um, we've used it to acquire properties downtown, and part of it is also if there's a property that needs to be acquired to implement a portion of the comprehensive, comprehensive plan, where if we publicly said we're allocating two hundred thousand dollars to acquire X parcel, uh, we'd be hugely disadvantaged in negotiating the purchase of that parcel. Um, so the council approves those expenses. Um, but it, there's still some flexibility. There's usually some that's still available for an opportunity that arises during the year as well.
Thanks for the clarification.
I have a question for you, the Phil or Eric. And, uh, that is, but over the past several years, there's been a, a talk of being able to connect the Barker Mill Trail to the Sherwood Heights, uh, trails. Has any money been set aside for hiking trails or any kind of recreational trails?
Eric, go ahead and read that.
Yeah, I mean, the, the construction of the trail in Anniversary Park, um, was a pretty big expense for a trail. Um, we recently, just a few years ago, did the connection from South Main Street to the Barker Mill Trail. Um, there are not currently funds allocated to connect from the, I guess, the upstream end of Barker to Sherwood, but it is in the plan. And, uh, comments about projects like that would help prioritize some of those proposals before the council.
What, what timeline are you looking at, Eric?
For, uh, comments to the council?
Uh, for, for, um, money being allocated for hiking trails in New Auburn?
Well, I can, I can probably jump in here. What we are doing, uh, so we did, I have had my meeting with, uh, the Recreation Department, and Recreation will be allocating, um, funds as far as trails. And, and we're leaving it at trails, because sometimes we're going to be looking at different projects with trails on which ones do we need to, uh, bring to the table, which ones, uh, might have other funding that we could allocate some of our funding with to get, um, a little more, um, of the project completed. And Dana, I, I believe Sabrina may have talked with you a little bit at the, uh, rec board this time.
Right, yeah, sure. Um, so I think one of the, one of the trails that we were talking about the last time I was involved was on the North River Road, uh, apartment complex, uh, that, you know, that is currently opening a trail along the Andrew Skoggan River. At the time, the, the Parks and Rec Advisory Board was committed to somehow trying to find a way to connect that trail to the Riverwalk. Um, it's kind of, uh, there, I think it's done, so.
So the staff is working on, uh, identifying, working with a team of volunteers, actually, to take a look at trails and which ones we need to prioritize, which ones need to be connected. That trail connectivity is a piece that I think that really needs to be our highest priority at this point. And, um, and getting some of our really great trail, uh, trails connected so we have better access to other areas of the community, uh, through, through the, our trail system. So that is underway, Steve. Um, and there will be money that'll be brought before the council for approval in this FY twenty-two budget coming up, uh, for that. Specifically, not, nothing that is, I, I can't identify anything that's in New Auburn, just, but if that becomes on that high level of a priority for connectivity, then it would be.
Well, the only reason why I ask is because, uh, uh, on the New Auburn Master Plan from two thousand ten, this trail was, uh, uh, part of the comprehensive plan right after that in two thousand eleven.
Right.
And, uh, it was supposed to be connected with the Main Street and everything else, so that's why I'm asking. It's been on the board there for roughly ten years, so.
Yeah, that's like, you know, that's like within our comprehensive plan. And our comp plan is, you know, that's, that is a ten-year plan. That is something that we look at. Uh, and, you know, not everything we've been able to go through. I'm glad we're doing the comp plan review. I've done some updates from the team that are working on that. They've already had, uh, at least one or two meetings now. And, uh, uh, and I think making those adjustments to our comp plan are going to be important, uh, for our next, taking it now to the next level. So those are great points. I think our comp plan is our, that's our, our major, um, even though we have a strategic plan, our comp plan is really our main focus on when we look at projects like this, and that's what we need to rely on, is to, to say, okay, where are we allocating our resources? Not that other things don't come in sometimes, they get diverted, but that really is where we need to keep going back to as our main target.
Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions about our FY twenty-one, um, budget? I did see somebody pop in with a chat, I assume that's somebody within the public that might have popped in with that, asked about Sixth Street. The only thing I can probably say about Sixth Street is I know Mary Carroll, Fifth and Sixth, uh, reconstruction was done on those in two thousand twelve. Um, I'm not sure what part of Sixth might have been part of that question, and, and I don't have a, a timeline on when uh, those roads might be, uh, looked at again, but I do know Mary Carroll, Fifth and Sixth, that was all one project that was done in two thousand twelve. That helps answer someone's question.
And Phil, just for a second, if I can, just to read in that question, um, for the, for the minutes. So the question is from Peter Seer, who's a member of the public. When will Sixth Street be rebuilt with complete sidewalks that lead to the Walton School? So thank you for taking that.
So it might have been that complete, and that's, we actually, oh. So it might have been that complete, and that's, we actually, oh, I had a meeting, this, this week, and what we've identified through our GIS system is, uh, you know, what I have here is a layout of all of that New Auburn area that looks at where our sidewalks, where do they end? And what's our connectivity? Uh, we, even with our sidewalks, as it, obviously, we need this whole area here as it moves up towards, uh, Walton School, uh, to ensure that we're plowing the roads, we need to be sidewalks that we need to, so we have good access. Um, but that was, uh, just reviewed. Um, uh, like I said, I just got this, uh, from the count, from, uh, Public Works, uh, this week. And so, um, we do have sidewalks that lead up all the way up Sixth, on, uh, one side of the road, uh, all the way up to Walton School. So again, I'm not sure if that's the reconstruction. Uh, down further, um, closer, uh, the beginning, of Sixth Street, it's on two sides up until you get to Rogue, Rogue Street. Uh, but those are things that we are looking at. Uh, those streets are all listed, especially Sixth Street. That's listed as a Priority One sidewalk. So those are plowed more frequently. Um, and they're certainly ones that we look at more frequently for, for repair because we know they have, uh, greater use and access. Um, so what I'd like to do now is, is move to the plan. And again, this is, our plan was adopted by the council, uh, when, during the budget process last year. And it's a five-year plan that's required out of, um, out of the city ordinance, uh, as it pertains to, uh, our capital improvement plan. And, uh, under economic, again, development planning, um, is really where I'll spend most of our time talking about. Uh, understanding that, um, we have a lot of other projects within the city that certainly tie in, to, uh, planning and, and I think, uh, regular review on those are probably really important as we move forward. And as we look at our future plan, again, when they're in the plan, it doesn't necessarily mean that the council is going to adopt it. Uh, they'll, they'll agree to put it in the plan, but sometimes those, uh, those, uh, additional years, sometimes they're often moved to another year because another priority might have come up in that most upcoming year, that's like twenty-two. That's where I'm working with the, uh, department directors now. One thing I'm encouraging all the department directors, as they develop the first five-year plan that I will be part of, is ensuring that, I really want to make sure we're seeing everything that's coming up. A lot of times we'll get year three, four, and five, just to be determined. Uh, we really need to know what that is. I need them to be, uh, forecasting what we're looking at, so we have a good, um, strategy moving forward. One thing I'll share with you, I haven't shared with the council yet. Uh, but what we are planning on bringing before the council is a, uh, a timeline. Uh, so a plan with a timeline as it comes to public, uh, infrastructure. A good solid plan on our public infrastructure, what that will look like moving forward, greater than five years. Um, if you look at the city of Auburn, a great deal of our public infrastructure was all built around the seventies, when it comes to some of our, our buildings that we operate in. Um, so of course, now that we're coming in, uh, you know, fifty years later, a lot of those buildings are now in need of, uh, upgrade or, or full changes. We've been talking about that with the public safety plan. The public safety facility plan isn't just police department, it's looking at all of our fire stations as well. Uh, but then we also have our, our Hasty Building, uh, for recreation. We also have, uh, Public Works Building, um, that we also need to work in our plan. Uh, obviously, where I'm at at Auburn Hall, um, you know, this is, this building was built in two thousand four. This is still a, a good, solid structure for us. This will be, uh, not in any, in that ten-year plan, of any changes, uh, within this building, other than what we might do, uh, inside. If, uh, the PD were us to, uh, move into our new, uh, public safety facility, that certainly does change, um, our facility and what we might be able to do to leverage that. And, uh, what could we, what could we do with, uh, the, uh, added space within this building? Uh, so that's coming up. We'll be presenting that to the council, uh, when we talk about the CIP plan. But I just think it's important for us to take a look at, uh, our capital infrastructure and looking at a plan that goes beyond the five years. Because this really, this only comes up, like I said, about every fifteen years where you're really taking a look at your infrastructure. And we have a lot of buildings that were all built around the same time. Uh, Central Fire Station, the Auburn Police Department, um, Engine Five on Center Street, all those were built around the same time. And so being able to provide this to the council is going to be important as they do their planning. Um, so when we take a look at our five-year plan, again, economic development, really, they really, it lands within the, the same categories that we've been talking about. Obviously, the New Auburn Village Center revitalization, there's still a build-out of another two years. That would be the upcoming FY twenty-two and the FY twenty-three. Comprehensive plan program, that always stays in. I think we'll always have a comprehensive plan. We always need to allocate resources to implement, uh, projects that have been identified in the comp plan, as we bring that before the city and prioritize those. Um, typically, the department always asks for around two hundred thousand dollars, uh, every year, for comp plan implementation, um, and it usually lands, um, I'm sorry, not two hundred thousand for that, uh, it was around four hundred thousand dollars. Um, that comes in as a request. It usually lands around that hundred thousand dollar, um, area. Uh, Dangerous Building and Demolition, that's the one that's usually at two hundred thousand, usually gets funded for, um, uh, for a hundred thousand each year. Um, the downtown vision, uh, that used to be listed as Great Falls, uh, vision, and then was changed to downtown. As many of you know, if we make any real investment into Great Falls area, there is a requirement, a need in there to do a lot when it comes to a drainage, uh, issue that we have over there. So we know we need to allocate some dollars aside for that. If the right development came in, um, how do we, how do we, uh, move forward with that? It would require upwards of nearly a million dollars to deal with a drainage issue that's in Great Falls. And then, uh, and then downtown parking walkability, uh, that's up for the next year. Eric, do you have other areas that you've identified that you'll be talking about with me next week that you want to share?
Um, there will certainly be some, uh, some new work in New Auburn, um, that sidewalk connection, um, that we'll be working on. Downtown parking and walkability, um, there's the, um, Minin Avenue sidewalk that's being constructed now, and a lot of state funds that will be reconstructing Elm Street, Academy Street, High Street, uh, down to Main Street. Um, there's the, um, state-funded project in New Auburn that will redesign Mill and Broad Streets connecting the two bridges. And, um, the big projects for downtown parking and walkability proposed for this coming year, are a reconstruction of, um, Library Avenue, um, connecting to Hampshire Street on Pleasant, and, uh, that general street network between Hampshire Street and Court Street, um, as well as the, um, the Court Street study that we completed last year. Uh, there'll be some proposed improvements along Court Street to implement some of those pedestrian safety measures. The Library Avenue project is what we've called it, but it really extends, uh, beyond Library Ave. Um, would be about a million and a half dollars to complete. Um, I'm guessing that we won't get funding for the whole thing, um, but it's broken into four subcomponents, I think, that could be done over time. And we also have an opportunity for the Court Street improvements, to potentially get a hundred thousand dollars of matching state funds this coming year, if we appropriate some funds for the match. And then in twenty twenty-two, um, as much as a half a million dollars. So I'm trying to make sure that we at least have enough for the match for those. Um, Court Street might be a higher priority, um, but if we can, we can, uh, leverage those state funds, I think it's worth waiting the extra year if we can get it for twenty cents on the dollar, basically, of local funds.
Questions about those, like I said, a lot of these categories, they consistent. And then it's the projects that come up that, that then meet some of those buckets that we're allocating, um, funds for. Uh, but certainly, as many of you know, the, uh, the comp plan will drive a, a great deal of that. Um, I think, you know, one of the questions, I think, was from, uh, Brian Dubois, uh, regarding how much attention will be given to improving our city's gateways and first impressions. You know, I'm really pleased to hear that the, the comp plan group, um, have, they're having those conversations now about our gateway. For those who didn't, maybe wasn't watching the council meeting when Brian came in and, and gave a presentation. He talked about, when he's talking with some of his clients, the Realtor, coming in and looking at Auburn. Sometimes when you first come into Auburn, some of what you see in our gateway, uh, really isn't, uh, isn't what, who we are as a city. Doesn't really showcase our best, uh, in that, as that first impression. And so I like that the comp plan review group is looking at things that they can do, and it's going to take time. But if we start implementing these, um, some of these changes now, that'll begin changing what it looks like as you come into that, our gateway, and, uh, and make those certainly, uh, more appealing as people come into our community. But, so there's certainly a lot of projects. I, I really, um, want to encourage the board, as you go through, and now you're, you're hearing the project that Eric, Eric is talking about. If during your process, you can provide Eric more information on some of these projects, or give some more direction on some of these, I, I keep referring to as buckets, because there really are these large buckets that we then do other, uh, projects. Uh, but if you could, uh, provide him feedback, that would be helpful as we, as we move forward. Uh, one of the requirements in the, um, in the, uh, ordinance again, is that I then, once the CIP plan has been, uh, completed, that's, I come back before you and present that. And so I would like to do that again, once we have a good handle of the CIP plan. That then ties into your future work as you move forward. Uh, so I like that we're doing a first meeting to get your feedback, so we, as we develop the plan. And then once the plan is completed, to then come back and talk about that, answering the questions you have regarding that as we move forward. I really appreciate Matt making this a priority for us too, and, uh, making sure that this happens. Sorry, Eric, go ahead.
Oh, just the one thing that I would add, that I think a lot of times the public doesn't realize behind the scenes is there are a lot of different funding sources. We're always looking for opportunities to pull state and federal funds. And just as an example, if you have three projects, sometimes the second or third priority will get done first. If we have access to eighty percent state and federal funds and twenty percent local. Um, then on the face of it, you wonder why did we do that, but it's because we can afford the twenty percent. And, you know, Priority One project might not have been eligible for those funds.
And Matt, if I could, there's a couple more questions. Maybe I should cover those. Are you okay with that?
Yeah, certainly. And then I'll wrap up. Thanks.
Okay. Um, so one from Walt Reed was regarding, uh, rebuilding of Brook and Third, which are in worse shape than Sixth Street. Um, you know, I, I don't have, uh, a, a schedule on Brook and Third. Uh, that's, that's not listed on my list. It, it hasn't been done in the last ten years anyway. I don't remember seeing anything, uh, listed there, especially with Brook. Uh, but I can check on that and, uh, um, and maybe provide an update, uh, back out. And then, um, Peter's here, had a follow-up, he lost internet connection while we're discussing the sidewalk plans for reconstruction at Sixth Street. Um, yeah, I think, I, I understand the need for both sides of Sixth Street to have access to Walton School, especially if we have younger walkers that are living on both sides, they're not crossing a street that doesn't have a crosswalk. Uh, that I also was just out walking that street, um, last week and taking a look at it. And, uh, and then that's what worked with, uh, getting, um, Public Works to provide us, uh, their update on where we are. Um, I can tell you that that is being looked at and, uh, um, and we're, we're identifying any sidewalks that are currently not being, uh, plowed, um, to, um, to have those plowed. The other piece that we're looking at as well is we do a, a grading system on, on roads. And one thing I'm encouraging Public Works to do is also to include a grading system on some of our sidewalks. Um, those are areas that certainly are in need. Second Street, um, we were able to make some improvements. Uh, when Eric talks about leveraging funds that become available, funds came available for elections. Um, and we were able to use some of the election dollars to take and move forward, uh, some of the projects that was done, uh, near the Boys and Girls Club, um, and try to leverage that to try to, uh, make that a, a safer access, uh, during elections. And so we're able to use some of those dollars as well, um, as well as other dollars. So we can kind of use multiple funds, I believe, on that. But, um, but we do, we do have a priority, but sometimes it is when other funds become available, obviously leverage that. Yes, Matt, go ahead.
Oh, I didn't have anything. I was just going to thank you. And, um, then, uh, so if members of the board have, uh, further thoughts over the next couple of weeks, we will, uh, I think we should make sure that those get to Eric, right?
Yes, yes. Just for a, uh, a timeline for you, um, we will be, um, going back before the council, um, sorry, I'm just digging up my budget. So by charter, the, uh, adoption of the CIP, uh, is, has to take place, uh, before, uh, March thirtieth. Um, but we'll be doing, um, a CIP presentation on March first. And so definitely if you can get, uh, have some discussions, if you have some feedback, I'd love to hear that. And again, I will, uh, I will circle back with you, um, uh, prior to the adoption of the CIP plan, which is in April. So sometime in that, uh, from that March first, when we present it to the council, to April, um, April twentieth, I'd like to give back to you, uh, with the plan, and then provide any other, uh, changes before we bring it for full adoption of the council.
That's great. Thank you very much. This is, um, I really appreciate this presentation. It's super helpful.
Sure. No, happy to be here and, uh, thank you all for what you're doing on the board. We really appreciate your, your, uh, service.
Thank you, Phil.
All right. Have a great night.
Thanks, too. Okay, the, great. So, um, moving on to our agenda, item number four. We have a public hearing around the ordinance map agenda. And this is around the proposed expansion of the Form Based Code zoning district T four dot two, traditional downtown neighborhood to replace the current zoning in the multifamily urban district in the New Auburn neighborhood, consisting of the streets from Riverside Drive to Ninth Street and portions of Broad and South Main Street pursuant to Chapter sixty, Article seventeen amendments of the C- City of Auburn ordinances. Staff?
Yeah, so this is the second part of the Form Based Code discussion to expand the traditional downtown neighborhood into the New Auburn area. The planning board had a few questions at the November meeting for staff, um, and tabled this proposal at the December meeting, um, waiting for some more public feedback. So we summed the questions that the planning board had at the November meeting in the staff report. And I just thought I'd go through those quickly just to make sure everybody's on the same page. Um, the planning board at the time wanted to know the type and the amount of work that would trigger the Form Based Code standards. Um, and I wanted to make sure it's clear that Eric and I have been reiterating this in emails and phone calls to folks that this only applies to new construction or substantial additions. Um, so homeowners wouldn't be required to do any upgrades to their building with, with these changes that are proposed. Um, in the ordinance language, anything that's under two hundred square feet is permitted by right. Um, they'd be required to get building permits, which is the same process that they would follow now. Um, any project that triggers subdivision or special exception, um, review would come before the planning board, much like it does now. Um, or an amendment to an existing Form Based Code plan that would increase the square footage by more than twenty-five percent. So that's pretty much like a five thousand square foot addition that would be reviewed by the planning board as a special exception. Um, we did receive a lot of inquiries about how this will affect taxes. And the only changes to taxes would be if, if there were substantial improvements made to buildings, which would increase the taxable value. Um, this is the same thing that, that happens today. If someone chose to improve or make, um, make changes to their building. Um, in November, the planning board had also asked about what protections would be in place for existing structures. And in these cases, um, the structures are protected under the existing non-conforming provisions. Um, if structural members are destroyed by more than fifty percent, they would be required to move the building to meet the current setback requirements. Um, in the multifamily urban district right now, for example, the front yard setback is twenty-five feet. And many of the homes in that area don't have twenty-five foot front yards. Um, so if, you know, there was an accident or, uh, you know, the, the home was damaged, they'd have to move it to meet that twenty-five foot requirement. And the new structure would be probably substantially smaller than what it is now. Um, so as, as part of, do, you know, this. So as, as part of, you know, this change, it'll help make those structures more conforming. And lastly, the planning board just wanted to see a table that compared the multifamily urban to the Form Based Code standards. And we provided that, um, in your staff report showing that the space and bulk requirements, those setbacks that I talked about, as well as the parking requirements. So we recommend that you, um, hear from the public. And if you're comfortable with the changes, make a recommendation to the, the city council in regards to this.
Great. Thank you very much. Any questions from the planning board for staff?
Go ahead, Mr. Martelli.
Eric, uh, on that front setback, uh, some of the, some of the lots are very small. And is there a possible chance of getting a variance so that, uh, instead of twenty-five feet, it could be ten feet or, or fifteen feet or, or whatever?
The, the ordinance does allow for fifty percent of the average depth of the lot. So if the lot is less than a hundred feet, um, then yeah, less than a hundred, yeah, then that setback would be reduced. So it wouldn't be the twenty-five feet.
All right. Very good. Thank you.
And Megan, I think under the new Form Based Code, it, it is reducing that setback already to a smaller number.
Yeah, Form Based Code, it's small fee, I believe, for front yard setback.
That's, that's part of the goal, Steve, on that one, is to actually reduce the requirement to match what most of the existing buildings already have.
Very good. Thank you.
Mr. Seer?
Yeah, the only, uh, sort of metric that I was actually looking for, and it's one that I was acutely aware of because I lived on, um, prior to my, so I was, um, on Broad Street. And I was in the multifamily, uh, urban district, but dealt with density. Um, and the density is quite high. What is the, the difference in density between the multifamily urban and the T four two?
Sorry, I'm just pulling that up. I want to pull this up just to confirm that I don't believe the Form Based Code specifically lists city requirements. It's, it's regulated based on the parking, but I just, before that becomes official, I'm just double checking it.
That's how I read your table.
Yeah, I believe that's.
And it doesn't, I guess it doesn't, um, doesn't specifically regulate. Um, but I guess my question would be, is there sort of a comparison? So we've got, looks like one space per dwelling unit, if I'm reading this correctly. And one guest space per four dwell, right?
Is this for multifamily?
Oh, this would be for the T four two.
For multifamily? Yeah. That's what I, that's what I have here.
Uh, on the table, it indicates that that would also be the parking requirement for T four two.
That is the parking requirement for T four two.
Right. So I guess, uh, staff's comment or response to my question is that, um, density is really governed by the parking requirements in the, in the, um, form base zone.
That's correct. Yeah. Um, right now, where it's not in Form Based Code, it would default to the parking requirements, the general park provisions for parking requirements, which is one and a half space per dwelling unit. But there's also that cap on density in the multifamily urban. So it's a little bit different in that regard.
Right. Yeah, that's the difference. I, I, I can't remember. I think it's something like, um,
Yeah, I think it's seventeen feet per acre.
Yeah, something like, yep.
Sorry, multifamily is twenty-six units per acre.
It really lets the developer, if they can build a structure that meets the Form Based Code requirements and placement on the lot, it lets them kind of back into the density with the infrastructure that they can, they can fit to support it, especially parking.
Other questions for staff?
I would just add that while it doesn't eliminate the requirement for onsite parking, it does reduce it compared to what we're, what we have today, which I know has been a goal of the planning board, of the council rather.
So seeing, um, questions from, further questions from the board here, I think we had to move, we don't have an applicant. So, um, I think we need to move to public hearing portion. So I need a motion.
Move to open the input section of the hearing.
Second. I have a second. All in favor? Okay, at this time, um, thank you. I'd like to invite members of the public to, who want to address the board to raise their hand. They will be brought, uh, allowed to address the board. And when you do, please state your name and address.
We have Walter Reed that I'll pull into a lot of talk. His hand is raised.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, uh, everyone. Uh, hey, I, um, uh, wanted to address a few things regarding the change. And I have some serious concerns about it. About the, about this particular change. First and foremost is the risk of losing more and more green space in our neighborhood due to the change allowing more building on lots that are really too small for, uh, you know, this, this area. We, we don't live in downtown and I kind of object to the whole, you know, moving my house, which is not in downtown, not even close to downtown, uh, into a label that marks it as downtown. That, that, that doesn't work for me. Uh, so I, I would like to know how you're going to address the, the loss of green space by the increase in density, uh, in, in this type of situation here. I mean, let's, let's be pretty clear. This area is already very full. I mean, it's fully built up. You're not going to be building new stuff unless you're violating the, at the existing zoning ordinance. So this change would allow building and reduction of green space in an area that's already very dense. And, and I just don't think that is good for New Auburn at all. My neighbors don't like this idea either. And so, uh, very, very concerned about that. The, the other issue, uh, that concerns me is the loss of parking spaces. I mean, when you're reducing the requirements for off-street parking, I mean, we already have a problem, especially in the winter. I mean, these roads get very narrow. We don't enforce the parking bans on snow emergencies. So that shrinks our, our roadways like Third Street by, uh, about ten feet to twelve feet narrower than it should be, uh, which can make a, a third street a one-lane road, uh, which is a real problem, uh, to be honest. So I, I really, I, I really object to any change that has any potential for increasing off-street or on-street parking. We need more off-street parking, not less of it. So I'm, I'm not quite sure what's going on there. The other, the other issue is, uh, the city seems to have a, um, a plan to narrow, uh, streets like they've done with Seventh Street. And I'll note that, uh, parts of Seventh Street are included in this rezoning plan, at least half of it. And the section that's included is a section that has been narrowed to the point where they lost one half of the street to parking. And it's now so narrow, there's not room for a bike lane or anything like that. You can't even walk on that side of the street without being in danger of being hit by a car. So I, I really am, um, I'm really concerned about this. And I don't think this is the right solution for New Auburn. So one of the other, uh, reasons that you want to do this is because of all the non-conforming buildings. And, you know, one of the things that was brought up was, well, if a house was lost due to fire, you'd have to shrink it and rebuild it. Well, you know, to, to be honest, as a homeowner in this affected area, uh, that, to me, that sounds like, you know, the government stepping in and, uh, doing unfair regulations that basically, you know, I've, I've got a like a hundred and forty-year-old house here, you know? To lose that and its actual historic elements in the neighborhood would be a very bad thing for Auburn. And, and, and I don't think that's really the goal of the city to, you know, kick people out of their homes or damage their homes and not allow them to rebuild. That's, that's never a good thing. If you have bad regulations, don't change the zoning to kind of work with the regulations. Fix the bad regulations. And, and we do have a process for appealing. We should allow that to happen. You know, if people have a house burned down and they're non-conforming, allow them to rebuild their house. Fix the regulations. Don't change the zoning. That's just, uh, that's just a bad idea. You have to remember that this, uh, the, the whole part of this area is not all the same. There are the lower parts of New, uh, uh, of this area that are much more dense. They are much more already. But the upper part is not, and you're treating them all the same? I think that's a big mistake. I think this, if you're going to expand it, don't expand it as much as you're expanding it now. Keep it, keep the scope smaller rather than larger. Uh, that's all I have.
Thank you very much. So Eric, we have another person, Peter Seer.
Hi, this is Peter. Uh, yeah, we were, uh, I'm very much agreement with, uh, what Mr. Reed had just said earlier. We're curious to know what the intent of this new rezoning is in reference to why would they be doing it so far up into the New Auburn Hill. Uh, we live on Sixth Street and we, um, we value, uh, living, um, on the hill in a residential area that does afford us really nice views of the city. In particular, we have a wonderful view of the Basilica all lit up at nighttime from our property. We think of this almost as being the new Munjoy Hill of Auburn. And if you know where Munjoy Hill is, that's down in Portland. Uh, we think that this has a lot of value for green space, scenic value, and also the density doesn't need to be any more dense than what it is. I'm challenging this planning board to really explain the true intent as to why this is necessary and why do they have to go up so far up the hill? All the way to Ninth Street with the rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further members of the public wish to address the board?
Peter Seer's hand is up again.
Yep.
Hi, um, this is Suzette Seer. I just wanted to add that, you know, this community also is built on a hill. These are older, um, homes, um, that are about seventy-five years old or older. And, um, you know, like our property, the way that this new zoning, if something were to happen to our property, is written that we would have to now build our home five feet from the road. It's almost impossible because our house is up on a, a knoll. And it's a very steep incline. And I noticed that with most of the houses all going down to the Second Street, that, um, you, you know, they're sort of carved into the hill. And to have a, a zoning law that asks you to, um, you, you know, move things closer to a sidewalk, it loses the whole feeling of the residential neighborhood that we have up here, um, you know, on Fourth, Fifth, Sixth, Seventh Street and on up. So I'm a little concerned about that of really not considering, I guess, the era in which these homes are built and even geographically how our property is situated. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wish to address the board? Please raise their hand. Okay, thank you. If no one else wishes to address the board, I think we can close the public hearing.
So many of these houses are over a hundred years old. To ask them to, to move their house if it were to burn down, that's why I asked earlier about the setbacks. It would be tough for them to, to move that back, uh, because of that hillside. I think that we need to, to look at this and, and maybe give it a little bit of leniency for this area.
So I, I'd like to make a comment about that. I, I know, um, Mrs. Suzette, uh, Seer had a, had a comment and she used the, the distance five feet. I think it's important when we discuss this to, um, note that the ordinance doesn't say you must build your house five feet from the road. It says you cannot build any closer than five feet, right? So, um, it's, it's a little bit of a paradigm shift. It's a little bit different than a traditional ordinance, ordinance that we're used to. It says, you know, this is where you must put your house. This isn't saying that a house would have to be rebuilt five feet from the road. It's saying you would not be able to, you would not be allowed to build it any closer than five feet. And so that people can kind of get a sense of what, the T four two was based on. If, uh, I would say sort of like, uh, Squire Little's house. Most people in town know, uh, where Edward Little's house was. That would be a typical example of a setback that fits within the T, uh, four two. So that house is, is certainly not five feet from the road. And that the, 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 the form base actually gives an envelope. So it says, you know, you, you can't be any closer than five feet and you can't be any farther away. I believe it was, um, than fifteen feet so that you, so you couldn't put your house way back at the back of your lot. Where currently you, you would be able to do that. And I'd also like to, to, uh, discuss, um, Mr. Seer mentioned, um, the idea that it would, it would sort of be catastrophic to require that the house be moved if it were to burn down and be rebuilt. But it's worth noting, if, uh, if one of these historic houses were to burn down right now and we were to leave the zoning the way it is, many of them could no longer be built on the lot because they're too large for the lots they're on, um, under the current zoning. Meaning that these historic houses would just plain be lost. You, you, you would not be able to replace them because current zoning doesn't allow for it. And that they would have to be moved at least, and that they would have to be moved at least twenty-five feet back from the road, right? So, um, we were asked the question, why is this necessary? And I think the, the, the answer is that, you, you, as with a lot of things that we do, it's, it's not necessary per se. It's that it's an attempt to preserve the neighborhood the way it is. T four two best fits where the houses are on those lots now. And it better fits, that zoning better fits, um, the way the neighborhood is now as it currently exists, better than the current zoning, which is multifamily urban, which would allow, I think, uh, Ms. Norwood said, uh, you're twenty, a twenty-seven apartment, uh, in a, in a building on a, on an acre. So that doesn't necessarily, what's there now doesn't fit. So that doesn't necessarily, what's there now doesn't fit what the neighborhood is. What's there now was placed there in order to try to increase the density when it was rezoned several years ago. I think this is really an attempt to roll that rezoning back and have a zoning that actually matches the current neighborhood to maintain that neighborhood. So I just wanted to kind of add that into the discussion.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board?
Chairman Duval, if you guys want to take a look at the actual building placements on any streets, I have it open, we can do the measurements. But I think Mr. Seer is right that the proposed zoning better matches the existing character than in the current zone.
I think that would be great, Mr. Cousins.
So we're looking at Sixth Street here. Most of the buildings are pretty close proximity to Sixth Street. We have an exception here on the corner, but it's close to Roke Street. The measurement there is right around fifteen feet to the front property lot. The proposed zoning would require somewhere between five and fifteen as a front setback. The current zoning would push this one back to twenty-five feet and would be an example of something that really couldn't be rebuilt on that parcel if it were damaged. Megan, I think the proposed change is limited to the multifamily urban zone, which ends at Mary Carol.
Yeah.
So really, most of the buildings in that section that's currently zoned multifamily urban are in that five to fifteen foot setback range. This might be one exception here that that may even be a newer construction home that was built under the their current zone standards. It says base year depreciation. It looks like it was a home that was built much more recently than most of the others. Now, you're built nineteen sixty, so the zoning, I don't know if the zoning was in place then or not, but you can see that most of the homes are closer than the twenty-five feet that's currently required.
So Eric, what, one of the things I heard was concern about green space. What, can you find any lots that would fit what was being described by a potential loss of green space?
I mean, it would require that is more consistent with this type of a placement or this type of a placement. This is more suburban in style. When you get back to twenty-five feet, you have your fifteen feet on both sides and your twenty-five feet from the rear. Most of the homes are not that style. It allows for more front stoops or front steps up close to the sidewalk. And I think it's important to note that the five to fifteen foot setback starts at the edge of the right of way. Not at the edge of the paved roadway or sidewalk. Those can be quite different and the right of way is quite a bit wider than the paved roadway generally. It does allow for reduced front yard space, but still has requirements for usable open space.
Can I jump in, Eric? If I remember correctly, so my previous home prior to this one was on Broad Street. I had looked at the possibility of building a garage. I believe my yard was actually quite large. So I was on a third of an acre, which was fairly large for my neighborhood, actually. But if I remember correctly, my side setback was five feet, but because I had because I had actually, I believe I had a hundred foot frontage, my side setback was still something like ten feet. It was quite small. So I guess when I think about the loss of green space, I think that most of these houses, and my house was set quite far back, it was abnormal. Well, most of the houses were set much closer to the road. And this wouldn't necessarily change how close they could get to the side lots and reducing yards. Is that correct?
Were you at, what number Broad Street were you at?
Oh, you're right there at two forty-five. See, my house was setback quite a bit. And that's because it was built, it was built under the current under the current zoning. So because of the topography and the required setback, it was, you can see that my house is pushed quite a bit farther back than, say, the my neighbor to the, kind of the north area, yeah.
Yeah, you would have had fifteen foot side setbacks and twenty-five foot front and rear under the current zoning.
Okay, so this possibly could reduce the side setbacks a little bit.
The side is fifteen feet minimum. Or sorry, I apologize, five feet minimum.
Okay. I wonder, just to ask staff this question about, okay, so how would T four dot two enable densification, which was a concern of one of the members of the public?
Well, instead of regulating in terms of the density of dwelling units, it would regulate in terms of the ability to provide parking. So right now, for example, the multifamily urban district requires five thousand square feet of minimum lot area. This is for multifamily buildings. Five thousand square feet of minimum lot area for one dwelling and then fifteen hundred square feet for each additional dwelling. So a lot of these lots are smaller and wouldn't be able to meet the, you know, sixty-five hundred above square footage requirement to be able to put additional units on the property. Under Form Based Code, if they have the space and can configure parking spaces, then they may be able to accommodate a few additional units.
But there would be a need to have a lot and then to, you would actually be in a situation, if you wanted to do this, you'd have to build a new building on an existing lot then. That's
Yeah, or you could, you could split units in an existing building, reconfigure them. You still have to have seven hundred square feet per unit because that's the minimum for a dwelling unit. And most of these lots with the parking situation, they'd still have to be able to provide the nine by eighteen parking space requirements for each of the units that they construct. So if the lot's already small as it is, then that would be a little bit tricky for them.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board? All right, so do people have a sense of where they want to go with this?
Well, I think anytime you change zoning anywhere, you're gonna run into places where there are houses that are no longer conforming to the new zoning. And the thing that, I mean, it breaks my heart to do that. I don't know, I would never want to do that to anyone, but the fact of the matter is the current zoning has far more houses that are non-conforming than the proposed zoning. So I think that it's probably a good fit for New Auburn to move to this zoning, just for that, to save, to put more houses in conforming. I think with a comprehensive plan, we might find some further changes possibly. But I don't think that that's necessarily a reason not to do something now. So I guess that's my thought.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with Dana on that as far as bringing, you know, this would put more into conformance.
Yeah, I would tend to agree. So having grown up in New Auburn and lived in New Auburn for all but the last five years, you know, everyone who is from New Auburn knows about the fire, right? And that much of the grid system that we see in Lower New Auburn is really a testament to Mr. Pulsofer and laying out the streets after the great fire, right? And so I think about that history when I look at this and I say, were that to happen now in New Auburn and we had to rebuild all those homes, we could not build the neighborhoods that we have now using what those neighborhoods are currently zoned as. All of those buildings would be required to be twenty-five feet back from the road. Many of those lots would simply no longer be viable to be built on because the building envelope would be so small that it might not be worth putting a home on anymore or an apartment building on anymore. And so, you know, with that historical perspective, I think that what we're doing here is we're really trying to maintain the character of the neighborhood, which is the purpose of Form Based Code. The purpose of the Form Based Code is to maintain a neighborhood with a specific aesthetic that we would like that neighborhood to have. Having said that, I think T four two preserves that aesthetic much better than multifamily urban. If New Auburn were to burn down again, it would never, and we had to rely on the multifamily urban zoning, we could not build it the way it is now. If we move to T four two, yes, there would be a few houses that might have to be, you know, eight, ten feet closer to the road because they were built when the setback was twenty-five feet. But overall, I think the character of the neighborhood would be preserved in following the requirements of T four two. And so it just goes back to what Mr. Carroll and Mr. Staples said, that it better fits the character of the neighborhood. It brings more houses into conformance. And it allows, it will better allow that neighborhood to remain the way it is, rather than having to drastically change if a house were to burn down or if a block of houses were to be lost. So that's my two cents.
Thank you. Other members of the board?
After thinking about this with what Evan has said, I agree with him.
Thank you.
I guess I have a question maybe for Eric. The concern about the loss of open space, it really only would matter if there was a reconstruction or new construction. But the T four two standard does say ten percent minimum. I just didn't know where that number came from. It does seem like a low number.
Megan, I think you talked about the triggers for when we would apply the Form Based Code and they really for new construction and I think you gave the threshold for the size of the building or addition.
Right. And right now, the ordinance for the T four two requires ten percent minimum usable open space. So that's where that figure came from. And as far as the multifamily urban, it requires that fifty percent of the net acreage be devoted to green area. And green area can include patios, walkways, landscaping within parking lots. So it's a little bit different than usable open space.
A lot of the buildings developed under the multifamily urban standard, the current standard, if you push the building back twenty-five feet, there's much more of a tendency to place your parking in front rather than have green space in the front and extend your driveway along the side of your house that the T four two attempts to encourage.
Thanks.
Any other comments? Okay, well, hearing none, I mean, I think I'm in general agreement with what has been said by other people. This change is designed to preserve their neighborhood as it is now. And with the tools that we have in front of us, this is the best way to do that. As Mr. Staples said, the comprehensive plan might be talking about some of these things and there may be changes coming, but at the moment, this is the best tool we have. So if everyone on the board is comfortable, I would need a motion for us to proceed.
I would like to make a motion that we forward a favorable recommendation to the city council with regard to the proposed expansion of the Form Based Code zoning district, T four two traditional downtown neighborhood to replace the current zoning in the multifamily urban district in the New Auburn neighborhood consisting of the streets from Riverside Drive to Ninth Street and portions of Broad Street and South Main Street pursuant to Chapter sixty, Article seventeen amendments of the City of Auburn ordinances.
Thank you.
A second.
We have a second. So at this point, we have a motion that's been seconded. Any discussion of that motion? Hearing none, I'd like to call for a vote. So Megan, can we do a roll call please?
Yep, and I've got them alphabetical this time. Mr. Bergeron?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Seer?
Yes.
Ms. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Martelli?
Yes.
Mr. Staples?
Yes.
And Chairman Duval?
All right, you. We'll now move to item number five on our agenda, which is a public hearing about the proposed creation of a transition zone shown on the reference map on the border of two Form Based Code zoning districts, which would allow property owners to select one of the two districts to apply to their property in the area adjacent, and this is the downtown area, the area adjacent to Academy Elm, Maple Pleasant, High Drummond, and a portion of Spring Street and the Laurel Avenue and Newberry Street neighborhoods pursuant to Chapter sixty, Article eighteen amendments of the City of Auburn ordinances. Staff?
Yeah, so that was a lot of text. This proposal is the map that you received and I'll bring it up to share it in a second. There's hatch areas on that map that is proposed to be added into what would be considered a transition zone. And so there's several, let me see if I can just pull this up now because. And so there's several, let me see if I can just pull this up now because. There's several areas in the city, if you look at this map. So for example, this is the T42 and then down here we have the T41, which was just changed a couple of meetings ago. So if you look at these, there's properties that are what we would consider to be on the border of two different form-based code districts. And there's several of these. We just identified a small area for right now and then we'll eventually get into the areas up here, probably at the next meeting. But we wanted to identify the, the parcels that would be considered transition parcels. So what that means is the property owners in, for example, this is T42 and then this is T5.2. They would be able to select which form-based code district their property is located in. And we thought that it would make more sense to include the properties that are on the same side of the road and that are next to each other as opposed to jumping across the street and, and doing properties that, that aren't necessarily neighboring on the same, on the same side of the street. So this is kind of what, what we came up with for the mapping. And I know the planning board at the last meeting wanted to create this transition zone as as a parcel, at a parcel level, as opposed to just doing 100 feet and selecting a transition area based on that. So happy to hear feedback that the planning board has on this and it is a public hearing. So I'm sure we'll, we'll hear from members of the public as well.
Questions from the board for staff?
Yeah, I have a, a question. What's the difference between the T42 and the T52?
I can't, I think we put a, a table in your staff report if I remember. Pull them both up at the same time.
Oh, here.
I, I think there's a table in there that lists all of them side by side.
There is on page two, Megan.
Okay.
Other questions from the board for staff?
Would, would this effectively show up as a new zone?
Yeah, so this, for example, say this parcel decided that they want to be in the, the 5.2 then, or I think that's five, that might be 5.1. Am I getting my colors right? But yeah, that, that parcel would then be blue because they would be in the, the T5.1. We wouldn't be able to do something like this. We wouldn't be able to select, for example, a, a parcel that's over here and bring them into the 4.2 because that would be what they consider to be spot zoning. But where these parcels are right on the border of another district, we're just extending the zoning line over to another parcel. So it's a little bit of a different situation.
And I think we had talked about it doesn't actually move the line or change the location, but it allows us to apply either standard for the lots that are bought those two form-based code districts. So if somebody really wanted to make a substantive change and move the line to really change more than one lot standard, they'd have to come back to you and the council to amend the actual map.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Megan, would it necessarily change the zoning on that lot? I ask only because one of the staff questions was, you know, how would we like to handle this? Would it be possible to leave the zone the same, however, treat that, those sort of like as a special exception kind of deal?
I think that makes the most sense for it or, or something that maybe staff, we could review at a staff level. Yeah, I think either staff level or special exception would make the most sense, just so that it's codified that we're applying those specific requirements. One of the questions that we, we had initially was can they pick and choose different requirements of the districts and kind of meld them together? And I think the consensus, at least among staff, was that they pick one or the other. They can't mix and match requirements between the two. So but yeah, a special exception or staff level review would be best just so that it's, it's on paper somewhere that that approval happened.
I have a question.
I was just saying, that's an interesting way to look at it, that if you're sort of choosing to opt zone, then elevate it to planning board. So it's given consideration as a special exception. That could be a good process.
I, I think we're causing ourselves a lot more questions and, and problems by allowing certain things to happen. On the east side of one street, it's, if it's F52 and on the west side of that street, it's, you know, 4.2, you know, leave it that. If they want a special exception, I could, I could go for that. But leaving it as a transition and opening up, that's a can of worms I don't want to get into.
So Steve, if I hear you correctly, you, you're not, you're not a fan of, we don't want to change zones. You're saying give them the ability to come to, say, the planning board to choose which one they want at any time. Is that correct?
As a special exception for that one lot.
Right.
But the neighboring lot would be under T42 or 52 or whatever, you know, color they're under.
Until he came and wanted a special exception. Exactly. They'd do it by law.
Exactly.
Okay, yeah.
Not, not open up a whole area and say, you can all do this. No, leave it as a special exception.
So Steve, you're saying it defaults to the, the zoning right next to it? Is that what you're saying?
Say that again, Stace.
Are you saying it's going to default to the zone that it's like adjacent to? I'm just trying to understand.
Believe it would default to the zone it's in now. And if they wanted, if they wanted to take the adjacent zone, then they'd come to us for an exception.
That's correct. That's correct.
So this is essentially what I understand Mr. Sears' proposal to be.
I like the sounds of that.
Well, I, I completely missed that. I'm sorry.
Did I miss something?
No, I think there was support for your proposal that within the transition zone, that changes in, in zoning would be special exceptions.
Yeah. So I gue- I guess if we're gonna, I guess I would just have a question for staff, but with regard to my, to my opinion on the subject, I think that we ought to treat the transition zones as an overlay district. Define special exception allowed within those overlay district. That those special exception allow you to sort of cross over to next door. But by treating that as an overlay with a special exception available only in that overlay, you prevent, say, you prevent, you prevent sort of that hop, skip, jump sort of happen outside of the overlay.
Yep. So we'll, I want to come back to that. I think that's, that's precisely where I am, Mr. Seer. So thank you. Are there any more questions for staff before we hear from the public?
I don't know that it's so much a question. Um, I, I'm just, I'm thinking, I'm looking at this and I'm, I'm thinking that this is just a lot of zones in a small area. It seems awfully confusing. I mean, I've been looking at this map now for a few days and it's just confusing to me to, to wrap my head around. There needing to be so many new zones. And this seems like, there's only one new zone, I mean, but it seems like to add a a transition is almost like a whole new zone here. So it's almost like we have five zones in this small area.
I see it as.
Does that present any kind of hardship? Yeah, go ahead.
No, the, the way I look and understand what you're saying, Dana, but, excuse me. I don't see it as creating a new zone. It's still just utilizing the zones. Yes, they're already there and there are a few in that area. But we're def- I don't think we're creating a new one. We're just enabling certain property owners to take advantage of one zone or the other.
Right. It's almost like a su- superpowered zone.
So if there are no more questions for staff, I'd need a motion to open the public comment portion of this hearing.
I make a motion to open the public comment. Second.
Second.
I can't see everybody, so I think we ought to do roll call. Megan?
Mr. Bergeron?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Seer?
Yes.
Ms. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Martelli?
Yes.
Mr. Staples?
Yes.
And Chairman Devo.
At this time, I'd like to invite members of the public who wish to address the board to raise their hand and identify where they're from and their name and.
We have three members of the public, Brian Dubois, Nicholas Charneski and Richard Browning. And so far, nobody's raising their hands. Oh, we have Nicholas Charneski. Nick, you should be live.
There you go. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So I represent Auburn Housing Authority or, or I'm with Auburn Housing Authority. We own 154 Court Street and 150, actually 65 Pleasant Street, which is right next to the engine house. One's an empty lot, one's there. My question is, would, would be like, as an example, like Pleasant Street is an empty lot. And that is designated towards the, the T4-2. And then more or less 154 Court would probably be T5-2, in my opinion. I guess, you know, you would have the a- ability to, to change or it's just a generic question and I just, I know it's going come up from the board or my board, but would we have the ability to actually change those two lots to two different zones and potentially have different setbacks in those areas, even though they're right next to each other?
Thank you. So my understanding is that as proposed, the answer would be yes.
That's correct. As long as those parcels are in these hatched areas. I, I can't exactly confirm that right now, but it, it sounds like they are based on what we just heard.
Right at the, the first two lots along Court Street, at the corner of Pleasant and Court extending towards Spring. And I suppose if they were developed independently, it could be the two different zone.
I mean, granted, we'd probably know the, on the direction of the city as well as our own. They would probably try to focus more towards the T5 zone. You know, a- as an example, even Spring Street, which is also Auburn Housing Development Corp. That would probably be more of a T5 zone as well. Now that it's, it's not required now, now that it's been developed. But I was just curious on that, on that end of it, you could just kind of have this kind of in my opinion, for my lot, for our lots that we have there, it just seems like it's a, you could have that still variation and be kind of difficult. I was wondering how this would go about in the future for, if you were to designate and would that be forever until those lots are, are, are developed? Or is it until they are, like say if we sell 65 Pleasant Street, you know, could, so nobody built there and then somebody else came along and bought it again. Could they change and, you know, designate towards the T5 or T4 zone? To best see, suit their needs?
Okay, um, yeah, those are great questions. Thank you very much. See, any other members of the public wish to address the board?
Nobody else is raising their hands.
That being said, I would make a motion to close public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. Do you have a second?
I'll second now.
All, so Megan, I think, because we can't see everybody, we ought to have a roll call vote.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Yes.
Great, uh, great. Thank you. So at this point, I'd like to open this up to the board for discussion.
Yeah, I, I, one thing I'd taken away from that good question from the public was does the ability to transfer from one to the other go with the individual property owner? How, you know, a building gets sold, the new owner wants to go to T42. Great. Has it two years. Next person buys it, they want to go to T51. Is the ability going to be there to jump back and forth with ownership? Is it a one-time deal? Is it a time period? I think that was a good question.
Those are very good questions.
If we go the route of a special exception, then the special exception approval runs with the land. So if they decided to, so for example, right now they're in T42. They decided to apply for a special exception to go into T51. They're granted that special exception, then they're in the T51. If they wanted to go back to T42, they'd have to go through the process to apply for another special exception.
But they do have the ability to go hypothetically back and forth every two years if they wanted to, or if there was a reason.
They could. We run into the buildings potentially becoming non-conforming. So that's something that we'd have to consider, you know. We wouldn't want to make buildings more non-conforming. So that is something that would come up as part of the planning board process. Our staff may catch it and say, I'm sorry, we can't allow you to change zones because your building will be non-conforming.
Yeah. How would that affect taxes?
We spoke to the assessor and she doesn't expect any of these form-based code changes to cause any changes in taxes. The only changes that would happen would be if someone were to make some substantial improvements to their building that would increase the taxable value. But that's the same thing that would happen now. So unless the neighborhood itself substantially changed with lots of new buildings and new construction, that's, that's the only impact that she perceives.
So I'm, I'm glad that the, I'm glad that the member of the public asked that question. I guess i- in my mind, I'm thinking about this as a special exception, a special exception for two reasons. One, that has to come before the planning board, right? It allows, it actually allows such that the zone doesn't change. So the lot would still be in T42. They have a special exception with a site plan approval to meet the guidelines under, say, T51. Okay, or T52. And in my mind, and I guess I'd want clarification from staff, that would mean that the designation, the zoning tied to the lot would actually remain as it is now. That would mean that the designation, the zoning tied to the lot would actually remain as it is now. What would change is the ability of the person um sort of enacting the site plan to utilize a different set of criteria. Such that once that building is built, um the building is still on. T four two. Um it received a special exception to meet the criteria in the adjacent zone. But that automatically makes it a non-conforming building moving forward so that whoever chooses to do that has essentially. Needs to, did it because they really wanted to, like they have just locked that building in. Um and if they get the site plan approval, but they never build on it, it didn't change the underlying zoning, it still remains T four two. So when the next person comes to buy it, they're buying it as a T four two lot. There's a site plan approval for it that they could use that's already been approved, or if they want to do something different, they would need to come back for a new. Special exception and site plan approval, but is my, is my thinking like way off the tracks there, uh Eric and Megan? Or am I kind of envisioning what the reality would be?
I think you're envisioning the reality, it's. It gets confusing. It definitely gets confusing um with. The not making buildings non-conforming and there's only districts and the planning board allowing that to happen as a special exception. Um so you're definitely right on track.
I have a question there. Oh, go ahead, Eric.
I think the way you're explaining it is accurate, that it doesn't actually change the underlying zoning and much like. Um if you approve um a multifamily building that requires special exception, that's not something they could have built with you without your approval. Um but it runs with the property and if it doesn't get built, then somebody else could come and propose. A different development, or if you approve a a modification of some kind for setbacks. You've essentially created a non-conforming structure on that lot, but it's gone through the appropriate process. And been approved by the planning board.
So I have a question that's um sort of in a different tack that I think touches on something that um. Mister Martelli was saying, but I, why are we, why do we want this transition zone? Is the reason because we feel like there are zone boundaries that are in the wrong place? I guess I'm, that this discussion makes me ask that question.
I think it was just to provide flexibility to the property owners that are that are on those two borders. Um sorry, I'm pointing to the screen, but obviously I'm not screen sharing, so. Um but the the whole purpose was to try and provide them with that flexibility to choose which. Which zoning district would best apply to them instead of drawing that hard line between the two.
But the, I guess I ask because the result of this could, as as we've just heard, be that. Of along the edge of a zone, we create. Um a patchwork of conforming or non-conforming buildings on lots. So you create a sort of ragged look to a zone. Or to a, to an area.
Yeah, I think it uh really was being driven by. The, you can see transitions along a street and we try to identify where those really occur, but whether they occur. At one point or one lot in either direction further down the street is somewhat arbitrary. Um you're trying to identify where it most clearly transitions, but uh it is really being. Um motivated by just a few examples where um we think the lines in the in the wrong spot. Um but I think that condition exists along a lot of the boundaries. Uh depending on how the property owner wants to develop it.
In in my mind, the transition actually sort of better fits the historical model of. Uh downtown developments prior to the creation of uh sort of strict zoning laws, right? Um you get sort of those amorphous transitions. Sometimes you'd have a hard transition down the center of a street, you know, sometimes it might be. You know, there's a few lots that kind of flip flop back and forth before you get to a a complete change. Uh I'd like to go back to something Mister Staples said um about there being a lot of lots. I I. A, I think it better fits the historical model for development, um having this sort of transitions. But then on the other hand, uh I think Mister Staples says something really important, which is there, you look at this map and there are a lot of zones and it sort of begs the question. Would we need to do this if we, if we hadn't carved it into so many, so many smaller zones? And I say that having been part of the group that proposed this to begin with, right? I mean, you know, perspective after the fact. I think that's a separate discussion about the number of zones we have, but you know, I think that that's worth talking about. It is kind of highlighted right here, so.
One of the things we've talked a little bit about at a staff level too, that maybe would make the board more comfortable with the idea of a transition zone is. Um it could be applied only along a transition that happens along a s- a specific street frontage. Uh what I mean by that is it would never cross the road. Um but it also wouldn't apply along a transition that is not along a set of street fronted. Uh an existing street frontage. And as an example, um along Spring Street. Um as you move away from Court Street to the south. It would apply where the T five two meets the uh T five one. Along Spring Street, but it wouldn't jump across to the back lots on Pleasant Street. Does that, does that explanation make any sense?
So it would apply at the corner of Elm and Spring essentially.
Yeah, it would apply along the law line that Megan has the cursor on right now, but it wouldn't. Apply between the back law lines of the Spring Street lots and the back law lines of Pleasant Street. It would only exist along a street frontage where a transition happens that's perpendicular to the street frontage.
But don't we have that whole area between Pleasant and Spring? Have the hashes in it?
We, we do on this map, but I'm thinking one way to pare it back if we think it's. It's covering, creating a new zone that covers too much area. The, the problem lots that we've had have really been where a transition line happens. As you move down an existing street and stay on the same side.
I- if I gather your, your way of thinking, Eric, on Spring Street, moving from court. Uh you've got multifamily near that corner there. Uh in the new building, what is it, thirty-two units or so there? And then you've got a parking lot and then you've got um multifamily houses. A business and then you go into multifamily houses again down near the end. So is this what you're, you're trying to do is put this under one rule?
We're, we're really looking at where there is um. Where we had to draw a line to transition between one district as you move down a particular street.
Yeah.
Where you have to draw a line along an existing street. Um this map is a little more expansive because it applies along transitions that happen between back property lines, but. Um it seemed like the board was concerned that this might be creating too busy a map or covering too large an area. And I'm just suggesting that one way to pare that down would be to only apply it when the transition happens. Um along an existing street and not along back property lines. It would be, it would be the transition between two side property lines that have frontage on the same street. Where Megan's showing the cursor would be an example.
Yeah.
But then it would not apply to the next line to the south. It would not continue down the street because we don't have a transition happening that intersects Spring Street.
Until you get to Elm, the church.
Correct, yeah, and then there would be two lots that are affected by it there.
And it would, it would not apply to anything on Pleasant Street except right at Court Street.
Where it meets the T five two, exactly, yeah. That might be a way to really, to limit it, and I think that gets at most of what the original goals were. Is transitions along existing streets.
So most of them hashtags right there would be gone, it would just be up where her um cursor is now and then down below next to the church.
Yeah, where the trend, I guess the best way I could describe it is where the transition happens. Between the two side property lines of two parcels that have frontage on the same street.
Okay.
I just quickly counted, Dan, and I might be off, but I counted, and again, I said quickly. Uh something like twenty-two lots that this would apply to then if we utilize uh Eric's metric.
Okay.
Yeah, that's just an idea. I'm thinking aloud as ways to to mod- maybe modify it so it is acceptable to the board.
Did a certain lot or landowners um initialize this or have, is that what started it?
So it's been a few different discussions, but honestly, the biggest driver is the transition at one eighty-six Main Street. Um between the T five one and T four two on a city-owned lot that uh.
Which is that, um Megan, can you throw the cursor? Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, and this board recommended changing the zoning to the higher. Right, city T five one and the council didn't, and I think there's been some regrets on the council about that vote.
Okay, understood. So that initiated this whole thing.
That's a big driver in it, yeah, I think it applies to a lot of other circumstances, like the the lots that Nick mentioned, Nick Charneski mentioned. Um it could apply there, it could apply in a lot of other locations, but the time-sensitive driver is that one eighty-six Main Street lot. And maybe, maybe this opens up more. Um concerns than it's worth and we should look at it at a lot-by-lot basis, but that's, that's what we're looking for feedback on.
But it's almost like putting him in um in this way, it is going to be a lot-by-lot anyways.
Has a special exception, yeah.
Right, we're not changing zoning, we're saying if you're within your parameters, whether you change them to what you just said, which I think I like better. Oh, that it really is a lot-by-lot anyways. Forward. But, go ahead, Eric.
Yeah, I think it does elevate it to planning board, like you said, Dan, and still allows for that lot-by-lot consideration.
Right.
It would almost be my preference um regardless of what we do with this transition zone to forward a recommendation to council. That we re-zone one eighty-six Main Street to T five one. I I I think that that's uh. I think that's a good idea. I think it should have been done that way to begin with, and and I would almost table the transition zone. Just to get a little bit more information on it from staff. Um but go ahead and push that one eighty-six main to T five one in the meantime.
What staff thought on that?
We, we notified the same people that would have been affected. It would affect that lot in the same way. Um and whereas you've, you've already made that recommendation, we could, we could figure out the process, but it. It could be a recommendation that they um reconsider their vote on changing one eighty-six Main Street. And one of the counselors that voted against it, I believe, could still reopen that at the council level.
That was the previous council though, right? Would that still be applicable?
I can check. I know some of them were still, were there. Um I was thinking all but. Two or three were there, but I could double check.
Yeah, I think you're right, three of them.
Look, I I tend to agree with Mister Staples here. I feel uh as, as I'm thinking about this, I can understand where this could be a good thing. Well, this is the sort of thing that we implement to solve a problem, right? And I wonder if this isn't a really big solution to a really small problem. Uh the really, the the much smaller problem being that there's a singular lot that um. We felt should be rezoned. Uh it was not rezoned. Since that time, it's clear that it should have been rezoned. And that, y- you know, if that's really the big driver here, well, that's, you know, the problem was that, you know, there was a. A, a, an, an error in decisions made and we should address that rather than develop a, a much larger solution. I'm not saying get rid of this idea. I mean, we had this idea in front of us. If this were to come in front of us again, I think we could move quickly on it because we've discussed it. But that, at this point, I don't know if we need to implement such a large solution, if, if really the problem is, is being driven by that one lot.
I agree a hundred percent.
I go along with that too.
I think that could work fine from a staff perspective. We can bring that back to the council.
Okay, so um just to recap, there's been discussion of just. Not addressing this transition zone now, but rather pivoting toward rezoning. Uh one eighty-six Main Street. Um. In order to do that, I, in order to do. So at this point, I think procedurally, what we have to do is we have to have two motions. Um. One to address one eighty-six Main Street and one to decide what we're gonna do with this transition zone. Um and our choices on the latter are to table it. Um we could vote it up or down. Um. Or we could postpone our decision.
Could I make them? I'd like to make a motion and, or if if there's more discussion, we could do that.
I, I have a clarifying question for staff. Um. So the, 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 the mention of um. Uh a zoning amendment for that one property was brought up. Uh of course, this hearing is not for that specific purpose. So my question is, um is it possible to forward a, so I have a couple of questions. Question one being, is it even possible for us to forward a recommendation um to amend the zoning map? Uh with regard to that singular parcel, given that our hearing is not specific to that. Uh so that's the first question. Um. Second question, if we want to move forward, if we can't do that tonight, the planning board can certainly. Um initiate a, 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 a zone change uh zoning map amendment process. Would we be required to amend the agenda first, to put that on the agenda and then to? Move forward with that, so I guess some procedural questions.
We, we did notify everyone that was within five hundred feet of all of the hatched parcels, which included one eighty-six Main Street. But the notice was specific to creating a transition zone. It wasn't specific to rezoning that particular parcel. Um so I think the cleanest way to do it would be to schedule it for the next meeting. But at the same time, we did notify everybody that is within five hundred feet of that parcel, so they have been notified. That a zone change would be taking place.
Maybe an alternative would be. To adopt the transition zone. For just the properties around Drummond Street, and I think that would include one eighty-six Main Street. We would start with a smaller transition zone, just to see how it goes. Assuming that one eighty-six Main Street would be our first. Um our first applicant to, to switch zones.
I think one, one safe alternative could be that you recommend that the council reconsider their vote on rezoning one eighty-six Main Street. And if not, you would hold a public hearing next month uh for that one. We could certainly do that and then we know we're covered. Um with a proper public hearing if they can't do it on their end.
Yeah, so I guess that's fair. I think the point Mister Seer brings up is correct, that this public hearing is not about rezoning. That particular lot. And so um that feels like not the right conversation to have. I think we now have at least two options to move forward with. Um changing the zone on that specific lot. One presented by Mister Cousins, which is to recommend that city council actually revisit their vote. And the other is for us to just initiate. And the other is for us to just initiate. Have a public hearing next meeting and then send that, send something that we have approved to council. In terms of changing the. I'd like to hear what other people think about Mr. Staples' idea of reducing the area. I have some thoughts, but I'd like to hear what other people think about that.
I, my thoughts now hearing, you know, what drove this? Thinking back, thinking ahead. My initial thought would be to table this proposed creation. Make a motion to do that, table that, and let's deal with one eighty-six main and look at the. Um, proposed transition down the road if we even think it's needed.
I agree with Dan on that.
I would, I would tend to agree with Dan. I think, um, if. If there was some pressure to get this done in a more timely manner, I think, uh, Mr. Staples proposed sort of an innovative and creative way. Make that happen now. Um, and to, to, to push that timeline up so that it's, it's happening more quickly, but. In the absence of the need to do that, um, I, I'd be more in favor of, uh, what Mr. Carroll proposed.
Yeah, I think the, the, the good thing, the, the best point about Mr. To Kell's idea is that if we were to make one eighty-six Main Street a transition zone, then that would just. Bring that property back to us when it's a proposed, uh, you know. Special exemption, so I, I think I would, I would prefer Mr. Carroll's idea, actually.
Yeah, I, I think I actually concur with that. Um. I think we have discussed enough options regarding what a transition zone might look like to. Question exactly how, what sort of language we'd use to describe that. Particular area anyway. And I'd like, I would prefer to see new maps if we were gonna do any kind of transition zone at this point, so. That's my thought. I don't know what other people think.
That being said, I would make a motion if somebody would like.
Um, I'm just waiting to hear to see if anybody else has comments.
I agree with what Mr. Carroll said earlier. It makes sense to. Not to go for this big of a change.
Okay, um. Thank you. So that being said, we'll, we'll need two motions. One, um. Would be a motion to delay our conversation about, um, the transition zone. We can choose to postpone that, which is a debatable motion, and we can choose to table it, which is not. And then we would need. And, and I guess that's the only motion we need now. We don't need another motion. We would just instruct staff to, um. Take some, then I think we should get that out of the way, and then we should discuss how we want to ask staff to address. The one eighty-six Main Street.
I would like to make a motion. To table the proposed creation of a transition zone shown on the reference map for adjacent parcels. On the border of two form-based code zoning districts, which would allow property owners to select one of the two districts. To apply to their property in the area adjacent to Academy, Elm, Maple, Pleasant. High, Drummond, and a portion of Spring Street. And the Laurel Avenue and Newbury Street neighborhood pursuant to chapter sixty. Article eighteen amendments of the City of Auburn ordinances.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Do a roll call vote on this, please.
Uh, Mr. Bergeron?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Seer?
Yes.
Miss LeBlanc?
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Mr. Martelli?
Yes.
Mr. Staples?
Yes.
And Chairman Duval?
Yes. Um, okay, so with that done, I think, uh, the last thing we should do is, um. How do we want to ask staff to deal with this? We have two different ideas that have been put forward. One is doing our own work and sending something to city council, and the other is to ask city council to reconsider their. Vote.
I, I'm, I'm personally in favor of asking the city council to reconsider their vote. Um, only because it, it, it. A could speed up the process on their end, because we wouldn't be required to have additional hearings and then. Through. Um, the two readings are required. They would just be revisiting the one singular vote. Um, which I think would free up staff time, um, especially given the budget season we're going into. I think, you know. If we can use staff less than, than that's great. But it also has an insurance plan built in it such that if we find out the city council can't deal with it that way, we still have time to bring it to our next meeting. Um, so my preference is to go with that route, only because it allows for two options to get it done, uh, in the same timeline.
I agree with Mr. Seer.
Any other thoughts, comments from the board on that? Hearing none, I think we should probably, um, let's vote on this anyway, so I'd need a motion.
I make a motion that the planning board set, set, uh, send a recommendation to city council to review their motion. Uh, regarding the rezoning of one Main Street. Did I get the address correct? One eighty-six?
I will second that.
I have a second. Any discussion? Any comment, discussion? Hearing none. Megan?
Mr. Bergeron?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Seer?
Yes.
Miss LeBlanc?
Yeah.
Mr. Martelli?
Yes.
Mr. Staples?
Yes.
And Chairman Duval?
Yes. Excellent. Thank you, everyone. Um. Moving on to item six on our agenda is a review and discussion of, of the planning board policy and procedures. We have three items. Here, one is, um, a discussion and consideration to adopt a revised attendance policy. Second is to consider and consider the adoption of new section pertaining to findings. And the third is a discussion on codifying motions in the policies and procedures. So, um. Staff, you wanna go over your report? Well, I think we should take these in turn, so, um. At, actually, I can just read these. As you'll, you'll recall, um. We had a discussion last time about creating or updating the attendance policy. Um, there should be language in the document. I actually didn't see that, so if staff could direct us to that, that would be great.
Yeah, let me, we've got it here. Let me just pull it up.
Okay.
So it was done in track changes, but for some reason, I don't have my comments over here. But it was tweeted in this, this section here. It originally said. Um, fifty percent of meetings within a twelve-month period, which would have been six or more meetings. Um, and we reduced it to twenty-five percent or three or more meetings, and then, um, we were, would require. Um, an executive session to be scheduled at the next regularly scheduled planning board meeting.
Thank you. Um, any discussion on this from the planning board?
Um, yes, my first comment is that. I like that this applies to everyone. Uh, obviously, if, if there's been an illness, it. That's what discussing the executive session. Uh, we can just move on, but then if there's a negligence, obviously, uh, you know, some action might be taken, but it doesn't give preference to. One of those types of abs- absences. It just sort of be some all the same. My, my, uh, second comment would be, um, and you guys know I get kind of picky about this stuff, but. Uh, the, the planning board chairperson shall schedule an executive session. For what purpose, right? I think it just needs to be expressly stated, uh. Uh, the, the, an executive session for the purposes of, you know. Discussing why the tenants has dropped to this level or however we want to say it, but I think it, it should just sort of be in there. As is now, I guess you could have an executive session to do whatever you wanted. You know, you could just say like, okay, we're having an executive session. This executive session is going to be to discuss why this happened. You know, the next one, we're having an executive session so that we can talk about booting you out. Right? You could do both of those under these rules because it's. Not expressly described what that executive session is for. If I remember correctly in our discussions, it was really about giving the person whose attendance dropped below that threshold the opportunity to. Kind of talk about why that happened.
Yeah, so some language around, um, something like an executive session to discuss the issue. At the next regularly scheduled meeting.
Hi, so this is Stacy. I mean, not to like, I think, I like you said earlier, um. And then not to overcomplicate matters. I think if you just say to discuss attendance, right, because. What we're talking about in Article C is attendance, so then you would say executive session to address attendance. And then I think you're probably fair at that.
I think that's great.
Agreed.
Yep, that works.
Need further thoughts on? This particular change? Hearing nine, I need a motion.
Um, I will make a motion to adopt the revised, uh, attendance policy. Um, to include the revision provided by. Uh, board member, uh, Mrs. LeBlanc.
Second.
Thank you. Can we get a roll call vote on that, please, Megan?
Yep, uh, Mr. Bergeron?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Seer?
Yes.
Miss LeBlanc?
Yeah.
Mr. Martelli?
Yes.
Mr. Staples?
Yes.
And Chairman Duval?
Yes. So that's item A off this list. Item B is the adoption of finding, um. We'll wait till staff catches up to, or moves us to that language.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I do have a question, and I don't know if it has to do with policy or if we can fit it in here to number six. Have some type of parameters on what's going to determine moving forward a live versus Zoom meeting? I know that others have been discussing it. You know, we thought tonight we were going to have a large attendance from the public, which we didn't, so that's why we're in Zoom. Is this a spot or a place in number six somewhere to come up with some type of parameters, or does the board vote on it, or how's that work?
So my gut feeling is that, um. We are currently living through exceptional circumstances and codifying it or this ordinance or policies. Specific rules around these circumstances is not necessary. I, the way we've been deciding whether or not it's Zoom has been, uh. Really driven by the city and what the city is recommending to me as chair. So, I, I'm perfectly happy with that. I understand that in-person meetings are, um, much more pleasant. Believe me, they are much more pleasant to chair than Zoom meetings. So I understand the frustration. I think at this point, making a rule about it seems to be overkill. That's my personal feeling.
Right. Now, what will determine while we're discussing it? I know council meets in person. Next month's meeting, how, when, when and what will determine whether that's live or Zoom?
I think this will be, um. It will, I mean, I think staff can, Eric should be able to describe, uh, what's going on in, with the council. And how the way they meet might be different than the way we meet and how that, that decision will come down. But I assume it's a discussion that he has with the city manager, frankly.
Yeah, we've been talking with, uh, Phil Kroll as well as, uh, Matt Feifield, our, um, safety manager. Who's been in charge of the COVID response on behalf of the city and. Um, we check in based on the agendas with them. We have one more month, um, at least. That we expect that there could be a large attendance because we'll be sending out, uh, pretty large mailing to the. Um, Union Street, Turner Street, uh, Denison Street neighborhood, uh, for one more round of form-based code updates. And then I think we'd revisit that with Matt Feifield and the chief, uh, sorry, the chief. I still call Phil the chief sometimes, too used to be the police chief, but, uh, Phil Kroll, our city manager. And then we could take another look at it, I think, after next month's meeting.
Thank you.
So Eric, uh, clarification, did I hear this correct? The decision as to whether or not we are meeting in person is coming from. Um, recommendations from both Phil and Matt?
And, and what we're sending out for notices and whether or not we think there's the possibility of having more than fifty people. Um, at the meeting, including staff, the board, and the public. With, um, anything more than, say, two hundred notices, um, we're, we're uncomfortable scheduling that for an in-person meeting. Because twenty-five percent of the public would put us way over the fifty-person maximum.
Is that sort of the metric that you're using, whether, with a, a threshold of two hundred?
Yeah, it's not a written policy, but that's where we've been with our last few meetings. We've sent out between two and six hundred notices per meeting. So it's not, not a written policy, but that's, that was the logic that we used in talking with, uh, Matt Feifield, the deputy chief at FIRE.
Okay.
Okay, I, I, I mean, I guess, a- as, as I'm sitting here, I'm, I'm hearing what Mr. Carroll is saying, and I, I can. I can understand, um. I can understand the, the, a comment that he made. He made a comment about regarding the number of people that were. Essentially not at the last public hearing that was supposed to be quite large, or that were, or maybe he was talking about this public hearing. Um, so. Uh, I mean, I don't know. I, I don't know what it's, for, for what it's worth, and, and I recognize that, um, you know, if, if Matt is recommending this, um. We really should be following his recommendations. But that, I, I, I agree with being cautious, um. But it. It, 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 it also. It, it tends to feel almost like, um, how do I say this? And this is not in a negative way. I mean, now that Mr. Carroll's brought it up, it almost seems like it's sort of like, uh, the boy cried wolf kind of situation where I'm saying. You know, we're worried about this happening, we're worried about this happening, and it doesn't happen, and so, um. That just tends to sort of erode public trust in, in groups and government entities, and I, I want to make sure that we. Kind of have a clear path towards, um, avoiding situations where we, where we say, no, you can't cut. Where we say, no, you, you need to come in on Zoom, which is harder for people. Because we're expecting a large group of people, and then that doesn't happen.
I believe that some of the, uh, rules and regulations are coming down from the governor. And that's why Matt is, is following those rules and regulations.
I understand. I, I, if, if, I, I absolutely understand why these things are happening. I guess that's just more of a personal. Personal comment there.
Yep. Understood.
I would have a hard time, let's say we ended up with more than fifty people. I would have a hard time defending the decision to have the meeting in person if I sent out two hundred notices and told them that I. and told them that I felt comfortable that there wouldn't be more than 50 people as part of it.
I can understand these. They're, it's, they're, it's an complicated situation. It's.
Yeah, I mean, so talk about like eroding public, you know, and their opinion of us, like returning people away, I think is not the better idea either, right?
Oh, yeah, because, but look, I, I work in the school, so I understand these, all these decisions are complicated. They're multifaceted.
We'd have to cancel the meeting if we ended up with too many people, and we wouldn't be able to even complete the work that you've done tonight.
All right.
Oh, yeah. So going forward, we'll continue. I will continue to follow the recommendations of the city on this. As chair. So findings.
So we just, for findings, we just defaulted to what is in the ordinance. I realized to put an additional bracket here. But these are the sections of the ordinance that speak specifically to findings for site plan, special exception and subdivision.
Thank you. Is there any discussion of this issue before we hear a motion? Hearing 990 in motion to adopt or not?
Make a motion to adopt the new section pertaining to findings.
Thank you. Is there a second? Okay, Megan, I think we had it, or any discussion of this? Okay, Megan?
Mr. Bergeron?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Seer?
Yes.
Ms. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Martelli?
Yes.
Mr. Staples?
Yes.
And Chairman Duval?
Yes. All right, thank you. The last issue here is the, is codifying motions. What, or at least how we do that. Our current policies and procedures state that we should use Robert's rules. We don't really use Robert's rules. We sort of use a little bit. Got two examples from staff, one from Gorham, one from Portland. I didn't see much in Portland, actually, and ironically, Gorham, even though this was recommended by MMA, right, as a, as a way to do it without using much Robert's rules? Is that correct, staff?
Correct.
Yeah, and Gorham actually uses more, way more Robert's rules than we ever have. So. Yeah, I wonder, yeah, if you could show, actually, can you show Portland where this, where they described their way for bringing up? Basically, we're talking about decision-making, right?
Sorry, I got a bunch of screens.
No, I, I get it.
Another annoying thing about Zoom.
Makes two of us.
Yeah, the reason I included Portland was because they're a larger city and they're more likely to have their decisions challenged in court as opposed to Gorham. And that was the advice from the MMA attorney that I had spoken to. So that's why I just wanted to include it as an example for the planning board to take a look at in comparison to Gorham's. So Gorham is the one they recommend, but Portland is, is the one that may get challenged in court, and this is what they, they use, so.
Got it. So they essentially use Robert's rules border?
Correct.
So I feel like we're in a bit of a circle around this particular issue. We use, I guess the, the question would be, do we want to just codify what we currently do? As a board and call that and just specify that votes are all made by motions and we, you can also postpone something by tabling it or whatever, you know, just sort of set out the, and much in the way Gorham has, the few bits of Robert's rules that we're going to use. Or. Yeah, so I guess that's really the question in front of us. So do we, do we think this is worth it? Or do we want to just continue going the way we're going? With a sort of random suggestion that we use Robert's rules to govern our meetings?
I guess the one thing that I'll just point out real quick about the Gorham procedures is that they actually, they go through the process for how motions are made. It's, it's almost like a script in a way. And sorry, I'm not sharing the right screen. It's almost like a, a script in a way where they, you know, once the chairman receives a motion, this is the order that they're given preference, and we don't have anything like that. And I, I do think that I personally, this is why I highlighted this, I like that there's an order given to motions. Thankfully, you know, Evan's been doing this for a while, and he, he knows kind of the order that things are supposed to happen. So that, that's certainly helpful, but I think it's, it would be good to have that on paper if the planning board was in favor of something like that.
Well, so this specifies the order in which you actually receive.
Yes, I apologize.
Preference to motions, right? So if you have two motions that happen, then you decide one before the other. As I look at this, we use a you see. And that's really it.
Yeah, well, tonight's a perfect example where you've tabled the transition zone. So you've laid it on the table, but it hasn't been postponed to a certain day. So we could pick that up at the next meeting, or we could pick it up in a year from now. So I personally, it would be helpful to say, we're just going to postpone it indefinitely. So it's just, we're just postponing it, or we're tabling it, and we'll pick it up either a certain meeting or we're just going to table it in general, which kind of leaves it open-ended. And I know, at least with the, the backlots discussion that we had several months ago, we get a lot of questions, hey, what's going on with that? And it's just kind of been tabled and it's out there, but hasn't been picked up again. So laying out a process for maybe when those things will be picked up again would be helpful, at least for staff.
Agree. I think we also should define table, and we might as well use Robert's rules. Description of what that is. I think it's actually fairly understood. What we do most of the time is actually postpone things to a date certain. Tabling, my understanding from other contexts where I've used Roger, Robert's rules is that tabling doesn't do that, but I can't for the life of me recall exactly what it does. So, yeah, I don't know what other members of the board think about this.
Well, I think this whole thing kind of came about because when I joined the board, I was confused by Robert's rules. And I think the alternative is all these different ideas from Gorham and Portland, and I think that even confuses it more. So I think I tend to prefer to just keep it the way we've been doing things. And if, you know, if we need to add some documentation to just what that is, I'm okay with that. But I don't think I would complicate it further.
I agree with Mr.
I'm in agreement. I'm in agreement with Dana too, yeah.
I mean. Yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't very familiar with the, I, I've become more familiar with the procedures, but adding these details, I mean, one was, what was, I guess my question would be, when was the last time there was a legal challenge to something that happened from the planning board?
There hasn't been one since for the past year and a half, I can say that, but Eric might know if it was recently.
Yeah, and my thoughts are not necessarily a legal challenge per se, but just having consistency in the process. So whether we add more detail to the process or we outline what the current process is.
I agree with what Ms. LeBlanc is saying, and if we need to define table as to a specific date, as we say, we'll table it to the very next meeting, I think that would be helpful too.
Right, so I'm going to pick up right there. So there, there would be an example, right? To, to postpone to a date, to a day certain, or even you could say like to table to a date certain, and you would give the date. So the difference between doing that and tabling something to a date uncertain is such that if we tabled something to a date certain to be the next meeting, it will automatically come up in the next meeting. However, we have chosen to table the transition zone. So staff could come in front of us and say, we want to talk to you about this. And we're just like, yeah, no, we're not going to hear it. One, we, the board has to vote to take it off of the table for us to even discuss it, right? So that's the difference. One triggers that it will happen. And the other one basically sort of like puts someone on a shelf until the board chooses to take it off. Having said that, the comments that I was going to make earlier is that what might not be a bad idea is to take those specific sections that are most pertinent to the way we do business in Robert's rules. And instead of saying, you know, we are going to use Robert's rules. So like, we're going to use this section of Robert's rules to describe how we make motions. Right? Robert's rules is big. I don't know if you guys have like ever sat down, but it's really, and most of it, almost all of it, we don't need. There's very small sections of it that we actually need. And I'm with Mr. Staples and all, all the, all the other folks that said, you know, maybe we don't need to complicate it more by coming up with our own rules. But what might simplify for things for us is to, is to narrow down what part of Robert's rules do we actually use? And then make sure, you know, if we want to have a description, if we want to pull right out of Robert's rules, you know, some definitions and stuff and stick them in our, our policy manual, that's fine too, but yeah, like find, find a way to simplify it down to just what, what are the parts that we're using?
So I, that's my instinct as well, Mr. Seer, is to identify the few aspects that we do use and then describe them in our policies. And I would like to strike the line that says Robert's rules of order governs the running of the planet board, planning board, and replace it with we vote this way, we postpone, you know, the, the few bits of Robert's rules that actually apply. And then explain them right in the policies and procedures so that new members of the planning board, when they come on, actually aren't as confused, that they can clarify with the chair, with staff, what's actually happening. And then we all know how the meeting's going to run. So.
It works for me.
I'm, I, I dominate, Mr. Duval, to read through Robert's rules and those individual sections.
I was going to say something along those, but not.
So at this point, if there are lead members of the public who are in attendance that would like to address the board about something related to board business, they can raise their hand.
We only have one member of the public left, Brian Duvois. He's not raising his hand right now.
Thank you. Seeing no hands raised, we'll proceed to item number eight, planning board items for discussion. The first item is the February meeting is when the planning board elects its chair. I'm not asking for nominations now, but I do think that if you are interested in thinking about being chair of the planning board and vice chair for that matter, if you could reach out to me, that would be great because at that point we can, I can sit down with you either over Zoom or on the phone or something to describe what goes through preparing for meetings and running them, and then also include you in the pre-meeting that the chair usually has with staff prior to the planning board meeting every month. So that's coming. What?
Sorry, no, if there is, or are you planning on staying if there's no other interest as chair?
Well, I think there will, there will have to be a nomination and a vote because that's what our rules say. I would consider continuing. If nobody else is, is interested in doing that, I will continue to do that. We can address that next week. So the way it'll go is we'll just have nominations and we'll go from there.
Thank you.
Yep, I have a question about that. So it sounds like at least next month, for at least next month, we'll be on Zoom again. Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
So our policies and procedures describe a situation that occurs that there are more than two people who are nominated for a position. If there's only one person nominated, it's a, it's an open vote. I mean, obviously you can vote yes or no for that one person, but that's it. If more than one person is nominated, we're required to, to vote by secret ballot. So I, I'm just bringing that up so that the chair and staff can be aware of that. Need to be provisioned made for that.
We can do a Zoom poll, I think.
Yes, we can.
All right, so question would be, is a Zoom poll a, a an anonymous thing, right?
Yes, they, they can be made anonymous. You have to, you, I do that all the time. So you have to set it up as anonymous, and I wouldn't do this, staff would do it. So you would set it up as anonymous, and then you'd be given a list of people, and you would be able to vote for one, and then staff would give us the results of that vote.
Okay, sounds good. I just want to make sure that we, everyone do, that the people who need to know, remember that.
Yeah.
There might need to be provision for that.
No, no, that's.
We'll try and make sure it's anonymous. If not, then we'll figure out an alternative, or we could, we could delay it till the March meeting.
It's, it's absolutely possible to do it anonymous.
I just don't know if it can be done in the webinar setting. I'm just looking right now, and I don't see an option to create a poll.
So it might be Zoom meeting. What are your, what are your headcount limits on Zoom meeting?
Well, the only reason we did it webinar style is so that we can bring the attendees in. But we have a Q and A option, chat participants. I think you probably have the same screen as us. We just don't have a, create a poll, which I think you have in the normal Zoom.
You might be able to get it turned on. I would ask your sys admin.
Yeah, we'll do that for the next meeting.
But we can, we can talk about this later. That's, thank you, Evan. That's really useful. At this point, move on to item B8B, which is the comprehensive plan update. Evan, I mean, not Evan, Mr. Staples or Mr. Martelli, would you like to give an update? I don't know, Mr. Staples, I don't know whether you have the most global perspective of all of us. So maybe hearing.
Okay, yeah, sure. So I'm just going to turn my video off because my internet connection is very slow. Well, I'll talk. So we, we, as a group at the, right before Christmas. He, that point to reset.
No, Mr. Staples, Mr. Staples? Dana?
Yeah.
You're, you're breaking up too much. Would the, would.
It's one of the reasons I didn't talk much tonight. My internet connection is really bad tonight.
Okay, would the board find it useful to get something briefly put in the chat to read? Okay, would the board find it useful to get something briefly put in the chat to read? Or
Ask if, if Mr. Staples is okay with it. If he could just I, I would be fine with an email sent at Mr. Staples Leisure. Kind of briefly describing it. That way, you know, he's not on the spot to get it done right now, especially trying to type in the chat. But that way, we could get the update, but, you know, when, when it's more convenient for Mr. Staples. I, I'm just saying, I would be fine with that. And I don't have to have it in the meeting.
Yeah, no, I would be
That would work for me, too.
Yeah, that'd be fine. Also, Megan was at all the meetings as well. Maybe she could chime in.
Yeah, I'm mute, Megan.
Do you want me to chime in here, or do you want me to send an email synopsis?
I, I think if you just had a, a quick synopsis verbally, I think that
Okay, yeah, so the comp plan, the larger group decided to split into three smaller subcommittees. One was to discuss recreation and river access. One was to discuss reducing the zoning districts and creating those transition zones. And the other was to discuss the new turnpike exit at, on Riverside Drive, Route one thirty-six. So we met last week with all three of those groups, and in terms of reducing zoning districts, it was a, a pretty good discussion. The consensus, I think, among that group was to try and come up with a map that essentially reduces the zoning districts down to three residential zoning districts. So it would be rural, suburban, and urban. And then they're going to discuss at the next meeting, the, the commercial districts. The agriculture zone they discussed would remain. So that's just really briefly what they had talked about. Another interesting thing that they had talked about was creating a, a green like a conservation district along Washington Ave as a gateway. And that's not to put the properties into a conservation district. It would just be along the front boundaries of the properties to kind of create a, a green entrance into the city, if you will. So that's something that they're, they're looking into. So that's a really, you know, sky high view of what that group had discussed. We're going to try and come up with a draft map to present to the larger group next week, just for the, the residential zoning changes. The turnpike group met last week, and they're working on coming up with, I think previous mayor Levante is coming up with some items to provide back to the bigger group on some previous studies that were completed on that. So they're kind of a more, I guess, hands-on group. They're going to get information together and get it back to us and the larger group. And then the last group, recreation, river access. They, I'm trying to remember exactly what they talked about off the top of my head.
Sabrina was a
Did a great presentation to the group, and they had a lot of questions about about what we have for existing programs. In the next meeting, they're going to talk more about sports tourism as well. So yeah, that, that meeting went really well, too. I don't know if that's the, the synopsis you're looking for off the top of my head, but
That was perfect. Thank you. Sorry for my internet connection. It's really bad tonight.
Great. Thank you, Megan. And we might as well stay with you and Eric about agenda item nine miscellaneous, the upcoming items for February.
As far as I know, it's just the, the additional form-based code changes, I don't think. Unless there's something else that came in.
Yeah, one, one other small one that the city council has been asked to consider, and they've shifted over to you for recommendation is on Outer Trap Road. You can see at the left side of the screen, the residential zoning strip ends where the, the map turns sort of mint green. There's a large marijuana grow operation out there. That's invested nearly a half a million dollars in a large building. All of the electrical infrastructure to support three or four of these buildings, as well as water and sewer wastewater disposal to support three or four buildings. And they're upset that when we adopted the marijuana ordinances, it's limiting their ability to use the infrastructure that they've built. Because they'd have to build the new buildings out back in the ag zone. Councilor Walker and Councilor Carrier put this on the council agenda, and they want to see about reducing the residential strip in that area to accommodate the business. So that'll come next month.
So you're looking at a special exception on this, Eric?
They'd be looking at reducing the width of the residential strip to take that red crosshatched area out of the residential strip and put it back in the ag zone.
All right, very good.
Kind of an odd one, but that'll be coming.
Thank you.
To rezone in that one spot?
What was that?
Said we would be looking to rezone in that one spot?
To, to move the boundary and reduce the depth of the residential strip in that one spot.
Okay, great. Thank you. Look forward to that one. I think that's it for this meeting, then. We have some other things that will come back, I think, the procedures, and then the, we'll have a CIP discussion, but otherwise. Sounds good, so.
Motion to adjourn?
That's what I was looking for.
Second.
We're out of here.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, y'all.
Take care, everybody. Bye.